Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen.
Amen.
Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law, and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect, and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. I'd just like to take a moment to remind all councillors of your obligations to declare prescribed and/or declarable conflicts of interest where relevant, and the requirement of such to remove yourself from the council chamber for debate and voting where applicable. Are there any apologies? Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I advise that councillor Penny Wolf will be absent today, and I move that she be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,746 and the 4,747 ordinary meetings held on Tuesday 3rd of September and Tuesday 10th of September 2024 be received, taken as read, and confirmed.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that the minutes of the 4,746 and the 4,747 ordinary meetings held on Tuesday 3rd of September and Tuesday 10th of September 2024 be received, taken as read, and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The ayes have it. I would like to call on Ms Sue Bremner, who will address the chamber on Victoria Park Baramban. Please proceed, Ms Bremner, when you're ready. You have five minutes.
Okay, Madam Chair, Lord Mayor, councillors, and supporters up there, lovely to see you all here. Thanks very much for this opportunity to address council. I'm Sue Bremner, and I'm a spokesperson for Save Victoria Park campaign. I'd actually like to start by recognising the Lord Mayor's vision in closing the golf course in 2021 and opening up the park to the public. That was a great vision, Lord Mayor. In 2025, it will be 150 years since the park was gazetted as the lungs of the city. It was originally 130 hectares, now down to only 64 hectares, and that's actually not that much. In terms of parkland within three kilometres of the city, we come last behind all the other Australian capital cities. 150 hectares, Sydney and Melbourne 250, Perth 400, and Adelaide an amazing 700 hectares. As a result of the release of the vision document, Lord Mayor, we formed our group in January 2020, and for nearly the last five years, we've developed submissions, we've organised community forums, we've made many, many phone calls, sent many, many emails, made many, many meetings and contacts with a range of stakeholders, including the project team, who've been very responsive to us. Our overarching principles for keeping Victoria Park safe for future generations have always been maximising trees and green space, minimising buildings, concrete, and bitumen, maximising free access for the public, and minimising privatisation, commercialisation of this public space, protecting and celebrating the First Nations' history at the park, which is considerable. In June 2023, the master plan was published, and we were pretty pleased with some of the changes that had been made during that consultation. And significantly, there was no mention ever, ever made throughout the whole consultation process of a stadium in our park. In March 2024, certain business groups hit the media with ideas dubbed the Golden Triangle, bold visions, which was actually all about sticking up a stadium in Vic Park. We rolled our eyes, actually. I mean, seriously, who would be silly enough to build a stadium in historic, densely packed residential area, in suburbs that are home to two large university campuses, four really big schools, and next door to Australia's largest hospital? I certainly wouldn't want to be in an ambulance trying to get into our hospital when the footy finished. Who would even consider destroying the precious green space in this age of climate change?
Yeah.
Well, the authors of the Quirk Report did, sadly. Unfortunately now, big business, big sport, big media are using the Olympic brand to push their agenda for a new stadium in Victoria Park, and that campaign has not let up since March this year. Back then, the former Premier Miles said, "No, no new stadium in Victoria Park." Our new Premier, David Crisifulli, has also said, "No new stadium" as part of his 100-day review, and we've heard him reiterate this many times, and certainly will be holding him to those words. However, the other politician who is incredibly influential in the future of Victoria Park is you, Lord Mayor. After the Quirk Report was released, first of all, we heard you say, and I quote, "I understand why Premier Miles has opted instead to upgrade Q-SAC, but the critical thing now is to work together, get on with it, and get the transport right." Then, we heard you say, "There's a compelling case for a stadium in the park." And honestly, I've lost track of the different and conflicting statements that I've heard from you since then. We want you to remember that great vision that you had, sorry, and I quote, "Victoria Park will become a place to be out in nature, to lower stress, to feel happier, a natural retreat." What we want from you today, Lord Mayor, is for you to put all that speculation to rest, to remember that vision, and to say, "While I'm Lord Mayor of Brisbane, there will never be a stadium or similar structure in Victoria Park Baramban."
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillors.
Thank you, Ms Bremner, if you'd like to take a seat. And I do remind councillors to remain quiet while the speaker is speaking. It can be off-putting if you're not normally used to that, so please refrain from calling out. Councillor Davis, would you care to respond, please? One moment, please, Councillor Davis. Councillor Johnston, that is unsuitable meeting conduct, and I do ask you to cease calling out. Councillor Davis.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you very much, Ms Bremner, for coming in and sharing your thoughts with us today. It's very nice to put a face to a name, and I too celebrate all things that are going to be wonderful in Victoria Park as part of our Victoria Park Master Plan. And I am aware that you have taken a very great interest in what we're doing there on the site, and I appreciate the very nice words that you have provided in terms of working with the project team. They're a great group of people, passionate about delivering the master plan. But of course, we're already underway with this. We've undertaken two early projects. The first one, of course, is the Spring Hill Common. I don't know if you had the opportunity to come during the Brisbane Festival to the first event that we had there. It was absolutely fantastic and well-attended, and the feedback was superb from those that were there, enjoying the programme. I know councillor Howard has got great feedback from her residents as well, and we're looking forward to that being used in the future well by the community and others. But of course, we've got a second early project, just about ready to be delivered. Not so enthusiastically supported by that local councillor, but we're hoping that when it's open shortly and the local councillor sees how well-patroned it is and how excited people are about using it, that maybe there'll be a change of heart. But there are some catalysts works that we're undertaking and planning for at the moment, and that includes the much-needed expansion to the car park, which I understand is something that you were quite interested in. It was a concern for you that you'd raised over time. I'm very excited that we'll be delivering a bespoke adventure playground. It would be absolutely wonderful for the young ones to come along and explore and enjoy and use their imagination in terms of this play space that's going to be a part of this wonderful new park. There's going to be an extension to the land bridge and a new parkway loop around the park, which is fantastic. And you alluded to the fact that there was a reduction in the amount of concrete, and that was taken on board in terms of that parkway loop. And there's, of course, that new active transport connection to Hurston Road, which will make it easier to get around the park. But it's not only us that's excited about it. The state and federal governments also are on board, and the funding is in partnership with both of those levels of government as part of the South East Queensland City Deal, and we welcome their great support for the master plan. So thank you very much for coming in and speaking with us today. We look forward to delivering on the master plan and it for being a great place for not only local residents but other residents of Brisbane to enjoy. Thank you.
Cut. Thank you. There is no calling out while another councillor is on their feet, as you know. Thank you, Councillor Davis, and thank you, Ms Bremner, for coming in today. We now move to question time. There is no calling out from the gallery either. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, Councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, the Shriner Council is proposing more kitty cat services for our growing city. Can you please update the chamber on how we are keeping Brisbane moving by improving the public transport network?
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, thanks to councillor Parry for the question. We know the Brisbane River is at the heart of our city, and ferries are a major domestic and international tourism drawcard. And while our City Cat and ferry services are an iconic part of Brisbane's lifestyle, they're also critical to the Shriner Council's plan to keep Brisbane moving. For Brisbane residents who live along the river, especially in the inner city and Kangaroo Point, our ferries are actually also a very important mode for commuting. And we're about to cap off a period of record investment in new transport infrastructure for Kangaroo Point. Earlier this year, we opened the Dockside Ferry Terminal. The Kangaroo Point Bridge will open on the 15th of December, just 47 days away, Chair, and the Mowbray Park Ferry Terminal upgrade is almost complete. Now, Kangaroo Point is growing fast, and with new bridges and ferry terminals on the way, we expect the way people travel into and out of Kangaroo Point is going to change dramatically. Currently, our City Hopper and inner-city cross-river services are delivered using a small fleet of kitty cat vessels. But over the past six months, we've observed an increase in overcrowding on the City Hopper service. Our patronage data tells us that the majority of City Hopper customers travel between destinations also served by City Cat services. Unfortunately, this means we often see our City Hopper services over capacity, while there's spare room on the City Cats which are operating in parallel. Of course, there are some terminals in our ferry network that can only be serviced by kitty cats. For residents who need to use the City Hopper, they're currently facing the daunting prospect of a 36-minute wait for a kitty cat that may already be at capacity. Some of those who choose to wait for the next service will then find out that the next kitty cat is also full during certain times of the day. This is obviously a very undesirable outcome for our customers. More than four million trips are taken on our City Cat and ferry network each and every year, and about one-quarter of those are on our inner-city kitty cat services. So to help address overcrowding and to provide more capacity in the network, we proposed a series of changes to our kitty cat services that will double their frequency. Last week, we launched consultation on the Kangaroo Point Ferry Improvement Plan, and our plan involves reconfiguring kitty cat services into three cross-river services. First one between Maritime Museum and QUT, the second between Holman Street and Riverside, and the third between Dockside and Sydney Street. This new kitty cat network can deliver more frequent services, provide better connections to the City Cat network, and provide more capacity and improve reliability. At the moment, our City Hopper and inner-city cross-river services run every 30 to 36 minutes. Under our new plan, we deliver a service every 15 minutes, doubling the service frequency at these terminals. Residents wanting to travel further up or down the river can then connect in with a City Cat service all for just 50 cents, Chair. To make the transfer easier and more efficient, we'll coordinate the ferry arrival times with City Cat services arriving at Riverside, Sydney Street, and QUT Gardens Point. So by providing more frequent and reliable services that connect in with our City Cat network, we're going to make it even easier for Kangaroo Point residents to leave the car at home and travel on the river. Chair, overcrowding on the City Hopper is something that councillor Massey has raised before in this place. As the Lord Mayor said at the time, "We don't want local residents being left behind." We have heard residents' concerns, and we've gone away and come up with a plan to address those concerns. I know councillor Massey has now been briefed on those changes, and councillor Howard is also supportive of the proposal as well. And after the results on the weekend, Chair, I'm happy to reach out to the new state member for South Brisbane, Dr O'Shea, to offer her a briefing as well. I have no doubt that she'll be keen to get across these changes, and I'm sure that the people of South Brisbane are looking forward to some fresh energy and ideas from their local representative. But of course, Chair, as with any change to our transport network, what we really want is for residents to have their say. We've published our plan on council's website, and residents can now provide their feedback to us online as part of our two-week community consultation period. In the first week, Chair, we've already had over 400 responses, and that survey is still open until the 3rd of November. I'm very much looking forward to hearing what residents have to say, but we're confident that this plan to double services will deliver more reliable and efficient services for our residents in Kangaroo Point. It's all part, Madam Chair, of our plan, the Shriner Council's plan, to keep Brisbane moving.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Well, thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, did you decide you'd introduce a pension tax on rates bills before the last election and keep it hidden from the people of Brisbane?
Lord Mayor.
Well, the answer, councillor Cassidy, is no, and there is in fact no pension tax. It's interesting the way...
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillors, you've all been in the chamber long enough. It's not just because of the break. You are not to speak while another councillor is on their feet.
It's interesting, because this suggestion that a fee that's introduced for paper bills to recover the cost of paper bills, which every utility supplier does, and people have been paying for many, many years on their Telstra bill and their Optus bill, on other utility charges, but...
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, I do caution you that that is unsuitable meeting conduct. I've asked you not to call out while another councillor is on their feet. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And so it is right and also appropriate that we make sure that we encourage more people to use the great services available by getting their rates available online through email or text message. Now, I think it's actually quite telling that councillor Cassidy underestimates pensioners and their ability to use this technology. If they have a phone, if they have a smartphone, they can get access to their rates bill via their phone. They can get text messages sent. And the suggestion that somehow pensioners aren't up to that is offensive and ageist. And I would actually caution councillor Cassidy for his discriminatory approach that he's taking here, suggesting that somehow they can't send an email, or they can't get online, or they can't get onto their phone. Because the reality is, the reality is, if councillor Cassidy actually would be honest and admit where a great deal of the email traffic in his ward office comes from, we know it's from pensioners. Because it's the same case across the city. We get huge amounts of emails and feedback and contact from pensioners. They are very active in providing support and using various channels, and to suggest that they are somehow incapable or unable is highly offensive and discriminatory. They are simply not. And in fact, since this cost recovery fee was announced, we've had a huge number of pensioners themselves. In fact, the biggest cohort of people signing up have been pensioners themselves. So it shows that they are more than capable...
One moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy and councillor Griffith, I again caution you not to call out. That is unsuitable meeting conduct, and you are calling out.
We now have close to 50% of all rate payers signed up to our e-rate system, and we want that to grow and grow and grow, and certainly this change has helped that, because people don't have to pay that fee. They don't have to. They can receive, as I said, their rates either via email or on their phone. That option is available to people. It's been available for many years. This change has increased the take-up significantly, which ultimately saves all rate payers millions of dollars. And that's an important thing when we're determined to keep costs down. And so we know that the cost to print and send out letters such as the rates bill has increased by 35% over the past two years, 35%. We know that other organisations charge significantly more, including the council, which councillor Cassidy sees as the benchmark for everything. What is it, councillor Parry? Moreton Bay Council, $2.50.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor.
Well, he's confirming that he does see it as a benchmark, once again, once again, $2.50.
Lord Mayor, please take your seat. Councillor Cassidy, you asked the question, the Lord Mayor is answering it. If you have further things to say, you can do it in general business. You don't call out, and that is your third warning.
Yes.
Councillor Cassidy, I've spoken, I'm giving you that advice. I don't need you to direct what I do.
As I was pointing out, compared to the $1.98 per bill that has been implemented this financial year, the Moreton Bay Council charges $2.50 per bill. But what they don't have is the most generous pensioner rebate scheme in the state. They certainly don't have that. We provide the most generous, the largest pensioner rebate of any council, and there is daylight between us and anyone else in terms of our support for pensioners. That has always been the case under this administration, it will continue to be the case, and we certainly work with all residents to make sure as many as possible avoid discharge by signing up to e-rates and helping save rate payers millions of dollars that can be put into playgrounds, that can be put into important upgrades, rather than paying Australia Post. What would you prefer, councillor Parry? Local park upgrades or paying Australia Post? We know that councillor Cassidy would prefer to pay Australia Post, and that is a shame.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Adamin.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of Communities Arts Committee, councillor Howard. The Shriner Council continues to provide high-quality, free, and low-cost services across Brisbane suburbs. Can you please update the chamber on how the Shriner Council's latest investment in the Western suburbs is making lifestyle even better?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, Madam Chair, I thank councillor Adamin for the question, because councillor Adamin knows firsthand how important libraries are in our communities with his office located next to his local library in the Western suburbs. The Shriner Council is thrilled to announce the upgrade of the Indrapilly Library, which will be jointly delivered by Brisbane City Council and the Indrapilly Shopping Centre. And as the fantastic Walter Taylor Award local councillor councillor Wolf knows, the Indrapilly Library is a bustling community hub that continues to grow in popularity with local residents. In the previous financial year alone, over 360,000 people visited the Indrapilly Library. This incredible local library provides a wide range of services to the nearby community, including quiet spaces for students looking to study and community meeting rooms for local organisations to hire. It is open every day of the week. The Indrapilly Library has an extensive collection of items available for users to borrow, catering to residents every possible need. Madam Chair, from a wide range of ebooks to multicultural and indigenous collections that include German, Indonesian, Persian, and Tamil, there is something for everyone at the Indrapilly Library. And those multi... It's very hard to continue...
Councillors, if you have to have conversations, please take it outside the chamber. It is a little bit loud, thank you, and it is off-putting. Councillor Collier and councillor Cassidy, I'm talking to you.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, it was councillor Wines speaking as well.
Councillor Johnston, I do not uphold your point of order.
Shall I continue, Madam Chair?
Councillor Howard.
Thank you. So from a wide range of ebooks to multicultural and indigenous collections that include German, Indonesian, Persian, and Tamil, there is something for everyone at the Indrapilly Library. Our council libraries are the best Queensland has to offer. More than 1.4 million people have visited a council library this year to date, with the most popular including Brisbane Square, Chirmside, Garden City, Sunnybank Hills, and Carandale libraries. The Shriner Council is extremely proud of our record of delivering fantastic local libraries that Brisbane residents love to utilise. It would be remiss of me not to mention our wonderful library staff who continuously go above and beyond for their customers and make the Brisbane library experience so special. One of the factors that make Indrapilly Library such a great community asset is, of course, its location. Conveniently located in the Indrapilly Shopping Centre, it is so accessible to residents, and it doesn't add an additional stop to people's already busy lives. Indrapilly Shopping Centre is able to cater for a wide range of community needs, including providing this fantastic library service, and this location is something we've received great feedback on. The current lease for the Indrapilly Library located at the Indrapilly Shopping Centre will expire on the 31st of August 2025. As part of this upgrade announcement, council is very happy to confirm that the Indrapilly Library will remain at the Indrapilly Shopping Centre until at least 2035. I'm sure this is also welcome news to councillor Johnston, who has remarked before that many of her residents access this library, and through you, Madam Chair, I do hope that she will help us spread the word about this exciting new chapter. Through the partnership with Indrapilly Shopping Centre, we're able to provide residents with a revitalised library at a reduced cost. Partnerships like this are exactly what our sensible savings approach is about. This is a fresh start for Indrapilly Library, and we're so excited to see further investment in this incredible community asset. The Shriner Council is committed to improving community facilities such as our incredible libraries so that residents are able to remain connected and our communities can continue to strengthen. Brisbane is the lifestyle capital of the country, and we're focused on delivering more to see and do in the suburbs. Through this exciting partnership, we're able to deliver a refreshed library that we know residents love to use whilst ensuring that the cost isn't picked up by the rate payers.
Further speakers. Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. My question is for the Lord Mayor. Recently, you and the LMP administration have denied the most vulnerable members of our community the ability to cook food on barbecues and stay connected to family and services, dramatically reducing the capability of footlight services in both Kerulpa Point and Musgrave Park. Since becoming councillor, I have repeatedly tried to use my suburban enhancement fund to create USB charging points in Musgrave Park. There are already USB charging points in Captain Burke Park. I have been blocked by the LMP administration every time. This simple measure would immediately improve living conditions and connect... This simple measure would immediately improve living conditions and connectivity today for rough sleepers. Lord Mayor, will you continue to cruelly collectively punish people sleeping rough for the failure of all governments, including yours, who have not ensured everyone has a roof over the heads? Or will you support me using the GAP award suburban enhancement funds to install USB charging points in Musgrave Park?
Lord Mayor.
Well, Madam Chair, you can really, really see why the Greens are so out of touch and wrong when it comes to housing and homeless this. Their response is USB charging points in parks. Their response is opposing homes in West End and Curilpa. Their response is turning a blind eye to violence, to stabbings, to fires. They don't care. They think it's okay for people to live in tents permanently in our parks. We do not accept that that is an appropriate housing solution, nor do our charities either. MICA Projects, one of the most respected charities that works in Musgrave Park, in Curilpa, in the West End precinct, is based in West End. I will quote from the CEO, "Living in a tent in a park is no way for anyone to live." Like MICA Projects, we believe the aim is to get people out of tents and into crisis accommodation. That is the aim. That is what our social workers and PSLOs are employed to do, to engage with people who are living rough, sleeping rough, and to get them the support they deserve and need, not to set them up permanently by putting USB chargers in a park. It is unbelievable that the Greens think this is actually a legitimate response. But what is not unbelievable is the fact that the Greens listen to only some people when it comes to the serious issues in Musgrave Park, because I've been contacted by many of Councillor Massey's residents who have been ignored by Councillor Massey, who are pleading with her to do something about the violence and safety issues in the park, and she ignores it. Let me read one. "Dear Lord Mayor, our family, our children, our students were today hit with toxic smokebombs by dangerous people camping out in Musgrave Park. A woman was stabbed in the neck with scissors by a delinquent living in our local community park. This is one of many violent attacks by people. You are allowing to reside in a local community park adjacent to a school, adjacent to community sporting facilities, opposite family homes with childrens and students only metres away. Enough is enough. Innocent people are being harmed. I look forward to your response about what and when you will do to put an end to this danger in Musgrave Park." Now, to be clear what's happened here, we had, in the space of a very short time, serious violent events that happened in the park. Now, we had two fires break out. Sorry, I'm just finding my notes here. We had two fires break out. Hang on a minute, here we go. Okay, so the first fire broke out in Musgrave Park on the 14th of October. The second fire was on the 15th of October, just a day later. We disconnected the power on the 17th of October in direct response to this and in direct to calls from so many members of the community. Now, let's be clear about what's happening here. This is not a matter of us switching off publicly accessible charging. Barbecues and circuit boards have been hotwired illegally and dangerously putting the community in danger.
One moment, Lord Mayor. One moment, Lord Mayor. Point of order, Councillor Massey.
The question was, would the Lord Mayor support me in USB chargers using my suburban enhancement fund, not this diatribe?
Councillor Massey, I believe the Lord Mayor is answering your question, and please do not call out while he is doing so. You did earlier.
People are living in tents, and Councillor Massey's solution is USB chargers. Like, this is so out of touch from the Greens, I cannot believe it.
Councillor Massey, I caution you, that is unsuitable meeting conduct. I just asked you not to call out. As I've said to other councillors, if you have something to say, you can say it in general business. When you've asked the question, allow the councillor to respond. The Lord Mayor is responding to your question. Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order, Councillor Cassidy.
I seek your ruling on Councillor Wines displaying unsuitable meeting conduct by shouting out across the chamber.
I do not uphold your point of order. Lord Mayor.
This year to date already, there's been thousands of dollars spent on electrical repairs after electrical equipment has been broken into and hotwired dangerously, putting themselves at risk, putting members of the community at risk, putting members of the public at risk. I don't know whether Councillor Massey expects me to turn a blind eye and allow someone to get killed in Musgrave Park, either by tampering with electrical equipment or through the violence that's happening there, but I will not sit by and watch these safety issues go unchallenged and unchecked. It's why I have engaged directly with the Police Commissioner to make sure that we can restore safety to Musgrave Park and Curilpa Point. Our priority is the community safety.
Point of order, Chair.
Our priority is getting people into crisis accommodation.
Point of order, Councillor Massey.
The question was, and we're running out of time here, whether the Lord Mayor supports the use of suburban enhancement fund to immediately improve the living conditions and connectivity today for the most vulnerable so they can connect with people?
Thank you, Councillor Massey. Lord Mayor is answering your question.
I support people being put into crisis accommodation. I support members of the community being safe in the park. I support the support being given by all of the agencies that are in there.
Further questions? Councillor Wong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Finance and City Governance Committee, Councillor Cunningham. Councillor Cunningham, the federal Labor Government and the former state Labor Government have made it clear that they don't want to see Brisbane's suburbs thriving. Can you update the chamber on the outcome of our latest funding applications?
Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, thanks to Councillor Wong for the question. Madam Chair, we on this side of the chamber are focused on keeping Brisbane moving. As one of Australia's fastest-growing cities and as Australia's largest council, we benefit from the opportunities this size affords us, but we also deal with significant challenges. We don't experience all of the same challenges as smaller and regional councils, but we all have, but we have on top of that many similar challenges with cost shifting but at a larger scale. That's why alongside our counterparts across the local government sector, we continue to fight for a better deal from the state and federal governments. I had the privilege to drive over to Bow Desert recently to represent Brisbane at a roundtable hearing as part of the Federal Parliamentary Inquiry into Local Government Sustainability. I told the MPs about how the unpredictable payment timing of financial assistance grants causes significant cash flow and budget challenges, something which has been echoed across the sector. I also shared concerns on behalf of the people of Brisbane about how state and federal grant programmes are run and how the people of Brisbane have been robbed of millions of dollars in vital community infrastructure funding. The federal government's Thriving Suburbs Programme sounded great on paper, Madam Chair. It provided $350 million for capital cities over three years, but despite representing the largest resident population, we've been snubbed entirely by the Albanese government. The programme guidelines were released in July this year, after councils had already adopted their annual budgets. Then they only provided four weeks in which to respond. Councils could only submit two projects each, which structurally disadvantages South East Queensland councils. You could fit about a dozen Sydney councils into Brisbane, and our neighbours like Logan and Moreton Bay are also a lot bigger than metro councils in other capital cities. Then there were a slew of impractical project eligibility criteria, which were ultimately rendered significant suitable projects we have planned for the next few years ineligible for funding. We raised these valid concerns with the federal government, but they fell on deaf ears. In the end, Brisbane City Council will not receive a cent from this $350 million programme, which is a very bad outcome for a programme which was meant to be about providing infrastructure for communities that have had significant population growth. We will be watching very closely to see which projects and councils were successful and how they met the guidelines. To add insult to injury, under the cloak of a decision made just hours before the caretaker period began, the now former local government minister, Megan Scanlon, also dadded Brisbane out of receiving anything close to a fair share of the $100 million South East Queensland Community Stimulus Programme. Despite being home to 33% of the region's residents, Brisbane will receive just 7% of that funding, with both of our projects submitted to the competitive portion of the fund being rejected. We don't know yet which projects were picked, but we do already know the grant programme guaranteed a minimum of $9.8 million to Megan Scanlon's hometown of the Gold Coast, 40% more than Brisbane, despite having far, far fewer residents. To cap things off, we also found out during caretaker that our application for a share of the $115 million statewide local government grants and subsidies programme was similarly unsuccessful, with Brisbane not receiving a cent, despite being home to 1 in 4 residents. Councils require more allocation-based funding packages to provide improved certainty and the ability to forward-plan projects for our residents. This is what regional councils get through the Works for Queensland Programme, and there is no reason why SEQ councils should not have their own programme exactly like this. Thankfully, Madam Chair, Queenslanders voted for a fresh start at this election, and we know that in our new premier, David Crisifulli and his team, there is a deep level of respect and understanding of the local government sector and the challenges we face. The premier and his team deeply engaged with the local government sector in opposition, and while we will fight for Brisbane, no matter who is sitting behind the premier's desk, we know the LNP government is passionate about...
Councillor Cunningham, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Collier.
Thanks, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, you said you have introduced your pensioner tax because your LNP council can't afford the postage on rates bills. Yet today, you have a $5.7 million contract for postage for your living in Brisbane newsletters. Why are you taxing pensioners to pay for your advertising?
Well, there is no pensioner tax, as I just said. But we heard again, Councillor Cassidy doubled down that we should do what Moreton Bay does, because Moreton Bay charges $2.50 for a paper bill, which is actually more than what we charge. And he claims that it's sometimes a type of wonderful thing that pensioners are exempt from $2.50 a bill. If there's four bills a year, that's $10. Okay, well, what's the difference between the support that we give pensioners and Moreton Bay gives pensioners? We provide a rebate for pensioners on a full pension of up to $1,248 per year.
Point of order, Chair.
What's your point of order, Councillor?
Relevance. I listened to Councillor Collier's question. I don't think she mentioned the Moreton Bay Regional Council, or me, in fact, but she certainly mentioned the Lord Mayor's addiction to advertising and him taxing pensioners to pay for that. So if you could draw the Lord Mayor back to the question.
Thank you, Councillor Cassidy. I don't uphold your point of order. The Lord Mayor is answering the question, and I hope you continue to allow him to do that in silence. Lord Mayor.
As I said before, there is no pensioner tax. It's a complete misrepresentation from Labor. And what else they've misrepresented is that they claim that we should do what Moreton Bay does. As I was pointing out, we provide a full pensioner rebate of up to $1,248 per year. Do you know what the Moreton Bay Council provides? What's the rebate that they provide?
Five hundred?
Five hundred? Seven hundred? $250 maximum per year. Almost $1,000 less per year than what Brisbane provides to pensioners. A thousand dollars.
One moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy.
My point of order is on relevance. I'm not sure what the Lord Mayor's obsession with Moreton Bay Council is, but this question is about Brisbane ratepayers. This question is about the pensioners at Brisbane who are now being taxed by this LNP Lord Mayor. And he thinks that's a joke. He's laughing about it, but this is a serious issue. He should answer the question.
Councillor Cassidy is trying to answer the question. I do not uphold your point of order. Lord Mayor.
So let's be clear here. Councillor Cassidy is the champion for, you know, less than $10 extra for pensioners, whereas we're the champion for $1,000 extra for pensioners. He wants us to do what Moreton Bay does. We've done so much better. A thousand dollars extra. Pensioners in Brisbane receive $1,000 more support from their council than Moreton Bay Council gives to their pensioners. And so this is just petty politics once again from a councillor who clearly doesn't understand the great level of support that we provide, the great respect that we provide for pensioners and seniors, and whether it's the most generous pensioner rebate scheme there is, or whether it's the seniors' off-peak travel that we provide, not only for pensioners but for other retirees as well. We go above and beyond to support our seniors because we respect them, we know that they are on fixed incomes. And for Councillor Cassidy to focus on what is a small-cost recovery charge when he ignores the $1,000 of extra support we give, that just shows where his priorities are wrong. It shows that this opposition is tired and out of touch with reality. This opposition has nothing to offer but petty politics, and it is a real great shame. When it comes to newsletters, I'm quite happy to address this issue because, once again, Councillor Cassidy himself has said on 4BC Radio, "Newsletters can be quite useful, and we don't think they should necessarily be scrapped, but just depoliticised." And so I'm trying to understand what Councillor Cassidy means by depoliticisation. Does he mean removing the seven photographs of himself in the newsletters that he puts out? Would that qualify as depoliticisation? Because every year without fail, Councillor Cassidy puts out newsletters with not just one photo, but multiple photos, sometimes seven, sometimes five, sometimes eight. And is that depoliticisation? Or maybe he's referring to when Labor was in charge and they started sending out Living in Brisbane. And not only would they put a message from the Lord Mayor on the front, but all of the articles would be full of political commentary. All of the articles, in fact, were basically Labor media releases, and they were quoted in Chair's names. And so Councillor Tim Quinn, who was the deputy mayor at the time, he'd get quoted in an article in Living in Brisbane, not just the Lord Mayor. This is Labor's record. This is Labor's record. And these are the people that Labor looks up to, mentors like Jim Sawley. We know that Councillor Cassidy looks up to Jim Sawley and thinks he's a great guy and is the great mentor. We know that their Labor Lord Merrill candidate looked up to Jim Sawley and was in fact recruited by Jim Sawley. This is their record. And so for them to suggest suddenly they don't like newsletters, when they put out newsletters with multiple photos of themselves in every year, multiple times a year, and they resist, they resist...
One moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Collier, I caution you that that is unsuitable meeting conduct, and I ask you to cease calling out. Lord Mayor.
They resist us keeping residents informed through Living in Brisbane.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you. My, sorry, my question is to the Chair of the Community and the Arts Committee, Councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the Shriner Council is providing more to see and do with free and low-cost events for all ages, like the Valley Fiesta. Can you please update the chamber on the success of the most recent event held over the weekend?
Just one moment, Councillor Howard, before I call you. I'm just waiting for the chamber to be quiet. Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, I thank my wonderful Deputy Councillor Atwood for the question, because who doesn't love a street party in Fortitude Valley? We all do. And of course, Valley Fiesta took place over the weekend...
And of course, Valley Fiesta took place over the weekend, and what an event it was. Valley Fiesta is, of course, Brisbane's biggest street party, and as I am both the responsible chair and the local councillor, it's wonderful to see this event continue to grow. Spread out across the streets of the bustling Fortitude Valley, this event featured four outdoor stages that showcased local arts acts and musicians, celebrating the diversity and talent that our city has to offer. Attracting headliners such as Meg Mack, May A, Velvet Trip, and the boys, partygoers were spoilt with choice, and it was an awesome day of live music at the Valley. Also joining the line-up, which was curated by the team at the Tivoli, included other local and national acts bringing a range of genres and sounds to this popular free music event. Other Fiesta experiences included DJs playing in Wind Lane and Bakery Lane, and I really want to thank the Apostolis family for their ongoing commitment to live music in Fortitude Valley. Local venues and businesses also embraced the occasion with various after-parties, keeping the party going late into the night. And through you, Madam Chair, I'm sure the deputy mayor will be thrilled to know that the night-time economy was pumping. It was, not only did we have the wonderful Valley Fiesta, we had night feasts, we had melt that was opening, and of course, later in the night, or actually earlier in the morning, we had 5,500 naked bodies on the Story Bridge, all in the name of art. So I think that that is just an amazing opportunity for the people of Brisbane to enjoy what Fortitude Valley is all about. It is the home of live music. The Shriner Council has been supporting live music in Fortitude Valley forever. This is the 28th year of our wonderful Valley Fiesta, but can I say, I talked to many venue operators who totally appreciated the work that Lord Mayor Adrian Shriner did during Covid. Many of our venues are still suffering as a result of Covid, and to have a street party that's been going for 28 years is just something that is just totally amazing. And just recently, it was announced that the iconic Fortitude Valley venue, the Zoo, would be making a return as the Crowbar, and I had the pleasure of meeting Nathan Trad and Tyler Dombrosky, who are working together with the Apostolis family to bring back live music to this amazing venue. So Valley Fiesta celebrated 28 wonderful years, and since 1997, Valley Fiesta has showcased the best of Brisbane's music and art scene and provides a platform for the city's emerging musical and creative talent. It was my privilege, of course, to represent the Lord Mayor at the opening ceremony and to speak with organisers and performers and volunteers on the day. Valley Fiesta truly is one of the best live music events we have here in Brisbane, and hosting it is at the heart of our live music industry. Fortitude Valley is an integral part of its success. So from 1:30pm through to 10pm, the streets, malls, and laneways of the Valley came alive, and it was incredible to see how well-attended Valley Fiesta was this year, which isn't surprising, Madam Chair, given that it was a free, all-ages event for Brisbane locals and, of course, visitors to experience. And of course, the four stages that we had, which were across the Brunswick Street, so again, we closed the street between McLaughlin and Anne Street, and that's always such a great vibe to see people out in the street dancing. We had the Brunswick Street Mall, we had the Wind Lane Quiver Stage, and we had Bakery Lane DJ Stage. So the Fortitude Valley was absolutely pumping, and it would be remiss of me not to thank all the team at Q Music who produced this fabulous event and the team at the Tivoli who put together the programming. In particular, I'd like to express my sincere gratitude to the CEO of Q Music, Chris Stewart, and the Creative Director of the Tivoli Group, Dave Slezwick. Organising a large community event such as this certainly isn't easy, but that's how they make it look, and I can't thank them all enough for the time and effort that they put in. Council was proud to support Valley Fiesta again this year and help make this event the best it can be. The Shriner Council is committed to supporting local musicians and help grow our bustling live music scene. We are proud to support a wide range of festivals and events through our Festivals and Events Funding Programme, and we'd also support artists directly through initiatives such as the Q-
Councillor Howard, your time has expired, and question time has now ended. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee recommendations.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Uh, thanks, Chair. I move the suspension of standing orders to enable me to move the following motion, that council rescinds the decision to bring in a pensioner tax charging ratepayers receiving their rates in the mail.
Seconded. Have you got a copy of it? Okay, all right. I'll now put the suspension, the movement for suspension of standing orders. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division. Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Councilors, ayes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being eight in favour and 18 against.
The motion is lost. Councilors, please resume your seats. Lord Mayor.
Madam Chair, I moved the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held during the spring recess 2024 on matters usually considered by that committee be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the recommendations of the Establishment and Coordination Committee during the spring recess 2024 on matters usually considered by that committee be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I refer to item A of the Establishment and Coordination Committee Report on page two and contract number two. There is $1,594 million for community car park upgrades. Can the Lord Mayor please provide us with a list of the community car park upgrades and their values in his discussion about this item so we can vote on what it is? Thank you.
Thank you. Lord Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. As I always do, I wanted to just briefly run through the lighting up of assets as I do every council meeting. Last night, Radcliffe Place, the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge were lit up in maroon to celebrate the 20th anniversary of the Critical Care Research Group, which helps raise funds for our emerging researchers to discover tomorrow's best treatments. Tonight, our assets will be lit up in red to support Light It Up For Dyslexia Day, which is a campaign designed to raise awareness for dyslexia and the Australians who suffer from it. Tomorrow, our assets will be lit up in teal to acknowledge Sexual Violence Awareness Month, which is a time for everyone in the community to focus on supporting survivors of sexual violence and saying no to sexual violence in our community. On Thursday, the Story Bridge, Radcliffe Place and Victoria Bridge will be lit up in yellow to support the inaugural You Are Not Alone Day, which aims to raise awareness around youth suicide and mental health. On Friday, our assets will be lit up in green, red, and orange, the colours of the Indian national flag to celebrate Diwali, the Indian Festival of Light. On Saturday, we'll light up our assets in red and white to support Queensland Tonga Day, which is obviously a celebration of Tongan culture here in Queensland ahead of the Tonga National Day on the 4th of November. This month is also Hindu Heritage Month, and I want to acknowledge our vibrant and growing Hindu community in Brisbane. They do a fantastic job in bringing people together. There are many great Hindu-based organisations that make a contribution to our multicultural community, and I am proud that we are in a city that has freedom of religion, where people can worship different gods, practise different faiths, and we see this as part of our wonderful multicultural fabric. And so best wishes to the members of our Hindu community, particularly as we celebrate Diwali as well. We've had some big milestones when it comes to public transport in Brisbane recently. First of all, we've had metro services start operating on the 169 route between Eight Mile Plains and the University of Queensland. We have had, that provides the capacity, a capacity increase for that route of 50%. And the good news is, they were seeing at this point in time increases in patronage significantly above those generated by 50-cent fares. And so 50-cent fares generated across the board, an increase in patronage on buses of around 11 or 12%. We're seeing metro services generate an increase of up to 30% in patronage at this point in time. So it's a wonderful outcome, and we're looking forward to the next stage of the rollout of metro, which also includes the biggest boost to bus services that our city has seen in well over a decade with the new bus network, or Brisbane's new bus network, which is part of what metro enables. There are some people who like to falsely claim that Brisbane Metro is just some larger buses running on a busway. I don't know who's making that claim, but some people do make that claim. The reality is Brisbane Metro is a game-changer because it allows massively increased capacity, it allows increased frequency and reliability, and it allows the bus network to be reformed to provide more services to more people more often, and that is exactly what our new bus network will deliver. And so we've confirmed today that the new bus network has been signed off by the state government, so the details of the services that will be provided have been signed off. And the only thing that we're waiting to finalise is the start date. And so what date does this new network come into effect? Where, obviously, we'll be talking to whoever is the new Transport Minister about that date, but it's a really exciting boost, the biggest boost to bus services in more than a decade. You know, combined with 50-cent fares, which the Christofouli government has pledged to keep, we think that this is a fantastic outcome and will help get more people under public transport and help reduce traffic congestion. Earlier this month, we, the, well, actually last week, so it was earlier this month, but last week, the deputy mayor and I, together with councillor Huang and councillor Marks, attended the LGAQ conference. I understand councillor Kim was also there. And so that was a great event held here in Brisbane. It's often held elsewhere other than Brisbane, so we appreciated the opportunity to be actively involved. In the, in the time that I've been a councillor now, I don't think I've ever had the opportunity to be a delegate at a, at an LGAQ conference. So it was a first for me, and one that I thoroughly enjoyed. So there was a lot of great motion debate, a lot of great presentations. We got to make a presentation on Bradbury Park, which was particularly well-received, and other councils were, I guess, looking in envy at Bradbury Park. But that was, that was obviously a great source of discussion. I also want to congratulate the new president of the LGAQ, who is the mayor of Gladstone, Matt Burnett, and we look forward to working with him to advocate at the state and federal levels in particular for a better deal for all councils, for more consultation when changes are made that affect councils, and an end to the relentless cost-shifting from state and federal government on to council. And so we know that Matt Burnett as president has committed to being a strong advocate, and we look forward to working with him on those matters and others. Obviously, we have the Queensland state election on the weekend, and we know that, obviously, Queenslanders voted for a fresh start and a change, and I want to congratulate Premier David Christofouli for his very convincing victory. Looks like he will win more seats than Palache ever won as premier. At her peak as premier, David Christofouli has won more seats than that. And while there was a great effort from Labour operatives to try and talk down the result, they were wrong, and the people of Queensland voted for massive change with a historic low vote for Labour right across the state. I do, however, want to thank former premier Stephen Miles, because in the relatively short time that he was premier, we were able to achieve some things together, which I think were very positive, particularly the negotiation for the new bus contract. I think that was, you know, a really positive negotiation. It is one that unfortunately wasn't possible with previous leadership or previous transport ministers, but one that Stephen Miles was determined to make happen, and I want to thank him for working with us to enable that and some other important changes as well. Stephen Miles deserves credit for enabling more homes to be built in Kirilpa through the state government's TLPI, and that was obviously something that would never have happened if it wasn't for the support of the Labour state government and premier Miles. I want to thank him for those things. Yesterday, October 28 marks eight years since Manmeet Sharma was tragically killed while driving one of our buses in Maruka. He was only 29 at the time, and most of us will remember that tragic day where he was just randomly attacked with petrol thrown on him, and it was, it was something that I will never forget, the people of Brisbane will never forget, something that should never have happened, but a tragedy that we remember to this day, and we honour Manmeet Sharma, his family, and also we honour all bus drivers who do an amazing job for our Just before I move on to the reports, though, I did want to address a couple of issues. This dishonest claim about some kind of pensioner tax, a focus on less than $10 a year in a cost-recovery fee, and a complete ignoring of a $1,000 pensioner rebate, which other councils don't provide. And so if councillor Cassidy or councillor Collier want to compare apples with apples, they cannot, they cannot not take into account the pensioner rebate that we provide, because it is a real factor. So Morton Bay offers $250 maximum for full pensioners, plus they offer an additional $10 when it comes to this cost-recovery charge. And so that's $260 in total compared to $1,284 that full pensioners get access to in Brisbane City Council. And so that says everything you need to know about our support for pensioners, and once again, it shows just how out of touch and misleading the opposition can be.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension.
Seconded. Has been moved for an extension by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, councillors. I also just wanted to touch on this issue of Victoria Park that was raised before, and it's been clear that there's going to be a 100-day review, and I'm not ruling anything in or out while that 100-day review is underway, but I can tell you this. This council, nor myself, ever- This council, nor myself, ever went in with a plan to build a stadium in Victoria Park. This was not something that we ever proposed, it's not something we ever considered, it's not something we even imagined. However, there has been only one independent review of Olympic venues conducted, and that independent review recommended Victoria Park as a location. It hadn't been on our radar, it hadn't been considered, but the single and only independent review into Olympic venues recommended Victoria Park. Now, there is going to be another review, and obviously, we will wait to see the outcome of that, but the reality is, this is going to be a decision made by the state, and I know there's multiple proposals being put forward. There's been proposals put forward for going back to rebuilding the Gabba, there's been proposals put forward for a stadium at Hamilton North Shore, and all of these proposals need to be looked at. I think a true unbiased assessment of different options needs to occur. My view though is that the Gabba won't work, the Gabba won't stack up, there's a reason why it fell over in the first place, because it just would not work. And so, we are going to see, I have no doubt, a thorough assessment of different options, including the Gabba, including CUSAC. I can tell you, that definitely won't work. I think everyone agrees that won't work, but this process needs to happen. So, you know, asking me to rule something out while there's an independent review going on, I'm not going to do that. I think what we need is a great legacy for our community. What we need is to see investment into Victoria Park to improve the facilities there and to plant trees and to implement our vision, but ultimately, these decisions are going to be made and funded by other levels of government. We're not going to be deciding to build a stadium anywhere. It is ultimately a state and federal government decision. But it was interesting, when we heard the public speaker and then we heard some interjections from the gallery, I thought one of those voices in the gallery sounded really familiar. And it's funny, because that voice seemed very like former councillor for Central Ward, David Hinchcliffe's voice. And, and the sort of, the kind of protest attitude and being opposed to things was exactly his trademark in politics. So if that is, if that was indeed former councillor David Hinchcliffe in the gallery, it was interesting to see his comeback, but also interesting to see his views on other things as well, because after the recent council election, he penned an interesting article about Green and Labor politics. And let me quote from that. He says, "It doesn't take a crystal ball to see the 124-year-old Labor Party is in terminal decline in this area and eventually in wider Australia. Yet, there is still an overwhelming need for a strong party of the centre-left. Ultimately, the only way I can see the Labor Party functioning in government is in partnership with and acting as a moderating influence on the Greens." I say that as a member of the ALP for 52 years. He then goes on to say, "In 10 years' time, there will be a Green-Labor alliance..." Full stop. "In 10 years' time, there will be a Green-Labor alliance." I think there's already one now, but he says, "Both parties, especially Labor, will actively deny the possibility..." Yes, we've seen that going on. "...and probably denounce me, but the reality is inevitable. The Greens will never have a tangible effect on Australian policy without finding a foothold in the centre." I agree with him there. "And to do that, they must moderate their more crazy extremists." I agree with him there too. Sadly, they're all in the council. And they must find a practical pragmatic partner in the middle ground. And so, what we see here is David Hinchcliffe, apparently, I don't know, someone said they saw him and confirmed his identity, teaming up with local Green Link groups in his self-professed Labor-Green Alliance. We're seeing it play out right now. He's teaming up with all of the Greens in the local area to oppose Victoria Park. Well, I can tell you, David Hinchcliffe opposed the Clem 7 Tunnel. David Hinchcliffe opposed the Legacy Way Tunnel and all of the other great infrastructure, the Go-Between Bridge, all of that infrastructure that was built. David Hinchcliffe opposed so many things that he went on to assist Campbell Newman in winning a massive majority in council in 2008, because you'll remember, David Hinchcliffe had the numbers. Between 2004 and 2008, David Hinchcliffe controlled the numbers in council. There may have been a Liberal Lord Mayor, but there was a Labor majority. He used that majority to oppose everything, and he was swept out, or Labor was swept out of office after four years of opposing everything. And councillor, well, former councillor Hinchcliffe is good at opposing things, I will tell you, he's very good at that, and he's back at it now. But I know a little bit of history, and I know that sometimes people want things to happen. Sometimes the wider community wants things to happen, and so it might be easy and politically expedient to oppose things. We know that the Greens do it, we know that the Greens only get their support by opposing things, contrary to what they say. They oppose housing, they oppose things, they are against things, they are a party of protest. We know that former councillor Hinchcliffe plays that way as well. But I'll let you in on a little secret, we actually get support by doing things in this chamber, and the reason that there are so many councils on this side is because we do things, not because we oppose things, and we'll continue doing things. We'll continue investing in Victoria Park because we believe in it, we have a great vision for Victoria Park and we want to see that implemented, and we're doing that in partnership with the state and federal governments. We will continue investing in better public transport, like building Brisbane Metro and rolling that out, in better bus services, better ferry services. We'll continue upgrades in the suburbs, suburban park upgrades and a whole range of investments that we're making in the suburbs. Other councils will continue to oppose things, and that's their choice, but we're very clearly in the doing column, and we will stay in the doing column, we'll stay in the building column, others can take the opposing column and the blocking column if they wish, but we're not going to be doing that. Item A in front of us is contracts and tendering for September 2024. This includes, this includes 26 out of 27 contracts being awarded to local suppliers, being 96% of contracts this month. And also, in the financial year-to-date, we've had 95% of all contracts being awarded to local suppliers with a total spend with local suppliers of $387.8 million. Some of the contracts include car park upgrades at three community facilities, including Bayside United Football Club, North Devils Leagues Club and North Brisbane Lapery Club, tyres and retreading for Brisbane's bus fleet, unaddressed mail services through Australia Post and another provider, to keep Brisbane residents updated with all of the great things that we're doing, the great services that are provided and the great events that they can take advantage of, which we support. And so, we will unashamedly continue to keep people updated, because it's important that they know, it's an important accountability measure, that they know what their council is doing on their behalf. There's also a new ticketing arrangement in place for River Stage as well, and River Stage continues to grow from strength to strength in terms of the events and the visitation by Brisbane residents, and so there's a new arrangement in place there. Item B, we have the lease of premises for the Indrapilly Library, this was flagged earlier. We announced last year that we would investigate looking for a new library site for Indrapilly, and in those investigations, we were approached by the shopping centre owners, who were very, very keen for us to stay in the shopping centre, and we also received some community feedback as well, that people preferred the library to be in the shopping centre. And so, we are going to renew a lease in the shopping centre at a fantastic rate, and we are going to also progressively, over the coming years, upgrade that library to make sure it is up to standard for a major suburban library. So I'm looking forward to delivering that upgrade for the people of the western suburbs, in particular, Indrapilly, Walter Taylor, Pullenvale, Tennyson Ward as well, who love to use that library too.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension.
Seconded. Been moved for an extension by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you again. Item C is the minor and administrative amendments to Brisbane City Plan, known as Minor Amendment Package T. This amendment gives effect to the latest changes in council's flood mapping, following the completion of five more flood studies. Obviously, as councillors would be well aware, there's an ongoing body of work for upgrading and updating flood studies, and this is a process that is business as usual, but we continue to update our mapping, and we continue to provide that very transparently and openly to the people of Brisbane. It is a massive change from what happened on the Labor, where flood studies were kept secret. People of Brisbane would try and put in RTI, like requests for, to get access to their flood mapping, and we have made it openly and freely available to everyone, both to property owners and to also people who are interested in buying property as well. And so, this changes on a regular basis, and we keep people updated. More than 8,000 properties in Kedron Brook, Brighton Creek, Tuong Creek, Sandy Creek and the Witten Creek catchments will have their flood mapping updated in City Plan. This figure includes approximately 2,000 properties which are new to the overlay, but also 1,000 properties which have been removed from the overlay. So their flood risk has been downgraded. Council will write to all affected property owners in early December to let them know about the mapping, and in the meantime, everyone can get access freely to council's flood awareness maps. This amendment also has some other things in it, which relate to state government legislative changes. There's an update to the planning scheme to reflect the state government's planning scheme regulation updates, which relate to decriminalising sex work, and this particularly relates to changes regarding brothels. I'm just telling you what's in the legislation here, so there's no confusion. Brothel is no longer a land use term, the new administrative term is sex work business, and sex work businesses will now be either considered as a shop or a home-based business. And so, these are state changes. Obviously, we don't get a say, like in most state government things, but they need to be now accepted into our planning scheme, and this minor amendment does that. Amendment D, sorry, item D is an amendment to the Brisbane City Council Audit Committee Charter and the appointment of a new independent member of the Brisbane City Council Audit Committee. There are some minor amendments to the charter, which is reviewed annually, as well as seeking approval to appoint a new member to the audit committee, which is our truly and thoroughly independent committee. The role of the Brisbane City Council Audit Committee, as I've spoken about many times in the chamber, is independent of the business of council. Instead, it functions as an advisory committee of council to review and make recommendations on any matters that are within the scope of its charter and responsibilities. Obviously, this charter is being updated today. The charter effectively sets out a number of arrangements associated with the audit committee. These are things like the objectives, authority, responsibilities, composition, tenure and reporting. The charter is reviewed annually and is a routine procedural update. There has been a minor amendment to Section 7 of the charter, following legal advice to align the wording related to the appointment of new members during the four-year term. There has been amendments to Section 8 of the charter to align with international guidelines. The second part of the item seeks to appoint Daniella Pittis to the committee as the committee's fourth member. The two, the current audit committee comprises of the Chair, Ms Gail Jukes, and two independent members, Mr Michael Willis and Ms Renita Gerard. Ms Pittis has over 20 years of experience in technology, with 12 years specifically in information security, risk and privacy. All of the members are extremely experienced and continue to work independently to support and protect council by managing risks. I commend this item and the others to the chamber.
Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair. I rise to speak on all of these items and ask that item B be taken serious item for voting purposes, please, at the outset. I'm going to start on contracts and tendering. Item A, quite a lot of contracts before us here today, more than we've seen over the last few months, six months in this council. There's a few interesting ones there. The astronomical cost of the Brunswick Street Mall toilet is being finalised. It's taken two years, two years for this LNP administration to sort out a public toilet in one of the busiest... We've heard councillor Howard talk about the night-time economy in the valley, how important that is, but for two years councillor Howard sat on her hands and the Deputy Mayor did absolutely nothing about sorting out this issue. And finally, after two years of that rickety, well, the stairs are all rickety on that temporary toilet in the middle, smack bang in the middle of one of our tourist destinations here in Brisbane, people going out into the valley at night time, they'd see this monstrosity sitting in the middle of the mall. You'd come out of a concert at the Fortitude Music Hall and walk straight into this disgusting, demountable building that was falling down before your eyes in front of you in the middle of the Brunswick Street Mall. Terrible, terrible, terrible. But now we finally see, well, we also know the cost of that was 300 bucks a day to hire as well, $270,000 literally flushed down the toilet, ratepayers money flushed down the toilet. So of course, it's time for a new restroom and new facilities in the valley, in the Brunswick Street Mall, of course. We were previously told the new site will cost one, this is just the site for the toilet previously, 1.45 million over 10 years in rent alone, and today the contract in here is for the fit-out for $590,000. I want to be gold-plated toilet seats for that sort of money, you'd think. That's a lot of money for a toilet, but we hope it does last longer and provide a better experience for people than the temporary facilities that the Deputy Mayor and councillor Howard had installed there. Contract number 12, I think it is, is the important one for today's debate, I think. So the Lord Mayor is desperate, he's really obsessed today with Morton Bay Council for some reason, really obsessed, I'm not sure where that's come from, but he spoke a lot about 10 minutes, I think, in his ENS report about Morton Bay Council, and he wanted us, I think it's because he wants everyone to compare him with other councils, obviously. He doesn't want us to compare him with him. He doesn't want us to look at his priorities within Brisbane City Council. He wants to create a diversion in looking away, because what we know in contract 12 is $5.7 million is being approved by this LNP regime for unaddressed mail services through Australia Post. Now, we heard the Lord Mayor in his answer to councillor Collier's question, or maybe my question, that he accused us of wanting to support Australia Post over the pensioners of Brisbane, because we didn't want to charge the pensioners of Brisbane a pension tax like the Lord Mayor does. We would rather just mail out those bills to people that have no other way of getting them. And the Lord Mayor claimed that that was somehow some weird support of Australia Post because we were willing to pay Australia Post to deliver mail. But what do we have here before us, Chair? A $5.7 million gift to Australia Post. And what does that pay for? Well, that pays for the Lord Mayor's Living in Brisbane newsletters to be sent out each and every month. It pays for the Lord Mayor's face and LNP council chairs' faces to be put on project newsletters and for them to be sent out across the city, $5.7 million. And the Lord Mayor admitted that he's going to get $2 million in revenue from his pension attacks back to council, and that's obviously going straight on the bill to Australia Post to pay for his Living in Brisbane newsletters. It's a low blow to find out that that's what this LNP mayor's priorities are in taxing pensioners to receive a bill they have no option of opting out of. So they can't shop around, they'll have to move to Morton Bay if they want to go over there and get a bill from them. They have no option other than to receive a bill from this LNP administration, which is increasing each and every year. They have no other option other than to get their rates bill. And now this LNP administration wants people to pay for the privilege of receiving a bill in the mail. That is really, really poor form. Now, the thing that the Lord Mayor also hasn't talked about when it comes to this Australia Post bill is that on top of this Australia Post bill, this $5.7 million, there's an increasing bill for direct mail service... increasing bill for direct mail services as well, to post out dump vouchers to people who opt for rates to be received via text or email. Now, people who opt out of paper bills get their dump vouchers posted to them, which is pretty expensive, according to the Lord Mayor, almost unaffordable. And you know what comes with those dump vouchers? A personally signed letter from the Lord Mayor. Now, the Lord Mayor wouldn't be brave enough, Chair, he wouldn't be brave enough to stick a Living in Brisbane newsletter with his face on it in a rates bill, because people wouldn't be too happy knowing where that came directly from. The Lord Mayor wouldn't put his face on a rates bill, but he will on dump vouchers because they are obviously a more positive experience for people when they interact with council than getting their rates bill and knowing that those rates increases are funding things like a blowout on the metro and 14 grand for councillor, for the deputy mayor to stay in the Palace of Versailles, you know, like all of these things, this largesse of this LNP administration is all being funded, all being funded through increased rates, increased fees and charges, a pension attack, they're now increasing the tax on debit and credit cards by 50%, this LNP regime. It seems every single week and every single month, this LNP regime are finding new and interesting ways of reaching into the pockets of the people of Brisbane, whether you're a rate payer or whether you're a resident here accessing council services. So that does speak volumes. When you compare the Lord Mayor to himself, and you just look at one item in this contracts and tendering document, you find out that he is cruel. He is absolutely cruel. We will support the Item B, Chair, for the lease of the premises to the Indrapilly Library for a couple of reasons, although it's interesting, the Lord Mayor made his comment about paying Australia Post to deliver something for council was apparently bad in one instance, but not bad in another. He's now paying the Indrapilly Shopping Centre to deliver a library for council. They've obviously got a fairly reasonable deal, and you look through the papers and the comparison in rent in privately owned libraries, well, libraries that we rent from private landholders, it's a very reasonable amount. I understand, obviously, Indrapilly Shopping Centre wants a key tenant, they want the thousands of people that go to council libraries to walk into that shopping centre, so they've obviously been desperate to keep council as a tenant, so we see that that rent paid is very reasonable, and the fact that apparently now Indrapilly Library is going to pay for 50% of the upgrade to that library, which we will support and we think it's good news for councillors like Councillor Collier, who will now, because of that saving, get the Belimba Library upgraded, and for Councillor Kim. So one of the items in the papers today was an option to build a new Indrapilly Library on council-owned land as a part of the Mogal Road roundabout project, but that's not proceeding now, so a lot of money has been saved in that building of that new library, so we will now finally see a new library delivered out in the Cullumvale Ward, we certainly hope, because the previous councillor out there certainly did absolutely nothing about that, but we have a fierce advocate, fierce advocate to redirect that money for a new library in Indrapilly, because the LNP is not delivering a new library in Indrapilly, to a new library out in the Cullumvale Ward. So that's certainly something that we will support and continue to support, Councillor Kim, in advocating for that for her community. Item C is a very important one, in particular for people that live in my community and were severely affected by the floods in February 2022 and the aftermath of that. Now, this document before us today, the updates to flood mapping, as the document says to us, are one of four pillars of council's response to flooding and council's response to mitigating against future impacts on residential and commercial properties, particularly around development of what can be built where, and the method and style of development, and also recommending and noting in here other studies that have been done to identify and recommend upgrades to vital infrastructure.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Point of order.
Point of order, Councillor.
I move for an extension.
Seconded.
There's been moved for an extension by Councillor Collier and seconded by Councillor Griffiths. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Thank you, thanks very much, Chair. So, as we know, floods in Brisbane are a real and regular threat, and they can be devastating to communities, to individuals, and to whole communities. The amendments that we have here to the flood mapping tell us that council is, of course, extremely aware of the flood threat across suburbs. So I guess the question, the initial question, when you read through these documents in which identify places that are predominantly having an increased risk of flooding in suburban areas, why is the drainage budget being cut? It's been over two years, over two years since that February 2022 flood disaster, very much a suburban flood disaster compared to 2011, and this LNP regime is still failing to prioritise suburban drainage. It's irresponsible and reprehensible. It's taken 18 months now to make many changes to City Plan following devastating floods, but instead, of course, we've seen this LNP mayor busy using floods to cover up poor financial mismanagement and a lack of investment in drainage, so nothing has changed. And I thought that one comment was very telling that the Lord Mayor used in his ENC speech just then, where he said, "This is just business as usual." He's treating this as just a business-as-usual approach. Well, the February 2022 floods weren't usual.
No.
They might become more common in the future with the effects of climate change, but they shouldn't really be treated as usual, and I thought that was a pretty poor comment from the Lord Mayor, but it probably reflects his approach and his regime's approach here when it comes to investing in the basics in the suburbs of Brisbane. So as we know here, 8,000, or around 8,000 properties near the Brighton Creek, Kedron Brook, Sandy Creek, Witten Creek, and Tuon Creek catchments will get a notification to them shortly that there are flood mapping changes from council, but there's going to be no information in that about any investment from the LNP about drainage and stormwater upgrades happening in those areas. In fact, I'm also 100% sure that the Lord Mayor won't write to those people and put his name on it, like he does with the dump vouchers. He won't write to them and confirm to them that over the next four years, he's cut the concrete budget by 20%, which funds the upgrades and maintenance of drainage out in the suburbs of Brisbane, or, well, more aptly, doesn't fund that anymore.
Yeah.
In my ward, 656 properties in Brighton are affected by these changes. Most, the vast majority, will be new properties added, and many will have increases in their flooding risk profile. People know from lived experience there in Brighton that flooding risks have increased over the years. They saw water in their bedrooms and living rooms two years ago. Instead, at the moment, instead of seeing any changes to council infrastructure, what they are seeing is their rates notices going up and up and up, they're getting charged more, whether it's for their rates and their fees and charges, whether it's to pay their rates, whether it's to receive their rates, but they're seeing less and less from council in return. In the Lord Mayor's most recent budget speech, the word drainage was not mentioned once at all. So we've got a business-as-usual approach, bringing through flood mapping today, but he didn't mention the word drainage once in his speech at all. What he did announce was a 20% cut in the supply of concrete, of course, which funds drainage projects. So the fact that council is now, as we know, spending more on depreciating in a financial term, aging drainage assets and investing in new ones, alarm bells were ringing a long time ago, but this document just adds to that now as well. So we're seeing these flood overlay maps change. There will be, we hope in some instances, in the highest category, category ones and twos, that there will be changes to planning decisions, particularly in those areas, and a better flood mitigation approach being taken. But again, that's what we hope, but we certainly won't be holding our breath based on the LNP's track record. The report before us today talks about flood mitigation strategies and infrastructure, well, certainly the need for it, the need for it. And this is something that is critical, I said, this document is one of those four pillars, one of the other four pillars is dealing with the issue of Brisbane being built on a flood plain, or most of Brisbane, suburban Brisbane, being built on these flood plains, and talking specifically about the flood mitigation study for the Brighton Creek catchment. Flood plain management strategies can be implemented, this is what it says in the document, including stormwater harvesting, rehabilitation of concrete channels, and creek crossing enhancements. There's, as you can see in the maps there, a catchment which covers a significant part of the suburb of Brighton, all mostly, all of it discharges through one single concrete drain running under Beaconsfield Terrace out into Moreton Bay. But what we have seen since that report was done, which I understand recommends a great many things to be done in terms of upgrading infrastructure to mitigate against future flooding, we haven't seen any money put towards those projects, any design done on those projects. We haven't seen the Lord Mayor talk about any of those projects in his Living in Brisbane newsletters that he's been sending out. The Lord Mayor hasn't been seen in Brighton in years and years, but in fact, all we see is a business-as-usual approach to just tell people that they are more at risk of flooding, but with no action and no plan from council to help alleviate that problem. There's reference, as I mentioned just before, to building methods and the changes we see in the document as well, and some changes to properties will mean that they're not allowed to use fill to achieve height, instead having to use stumps. But I know in the Brighton Creek catchment area, and I know this applies to a lot of others, it's very, very few of those properties will be affected by these changes. So what we will continue to see is an increase, a reflection of the increased flood risk for properties occurring via these mapping changes, but we won't see any changes, any great changes, in development methods allowing people to use fill to achieve their own personal flood immunity, but that affects other neighbours downstream. And I've seen countless examples of those situations in the proposed flood map area that we have before us today, and having those effects on neighbouring properties. Even if in the first instance, it's a fairly minor impact, if every second place starts doing it, that becomes a very, very large effect across the whole area. So obviously, mapping is one thing, but there are many more changes to be made to achieve the very best flood immunity that we can as a council and for our suburbs, but mapping alone will not cut it, unfortunately. The final clause in this ENC report is D, the amendment to the Brisbane City Council Audit Committee Charter and the appointment of a new member, pardon me. Look, we have some mixed views on this one, Chairs, I'm sure councillors will appreciate, given our position on the audit committee reports we get to council. We support the having an audit committee, generally speaking. The decision to appoint Daniella Pittis as the new member to the Audit Committee, looking at what we've been provided, her resume is impressive, and the more ayes we have scrutinising this LNP regime, the better, and she certainly seems qualified for that. However, I continue in our calls for more transparency from this regime when it comes to the Audit Committee. What happens in those meetings stays within the four walls. We don't get the information that is discussed, the reports that are brought to there or produced as a result of. We get a high level, a high level of minutes, if you will call it that, after these meetings have been held, and we're required to endorse those minutes, but we don't know what the outcome of the Audit Committee's recommendations to council are. So we do remain concerned about how their recommendations are actually actioned here in council. We know there've been numerous instances where Audit Committee, the Audit Committee's work is vital and its reporting is vital. There's been those fraud issues that the LNP have fallen victim to, project delay issues, budget cuts. How do we know, though, that all those recommendations of the Audit Committee are actually being implemented? Because they happen time and time and time and time again. So the Audit Committee is obviously doing their work, but we remain concerned that this LNP regime is not doing their work. The Audit Committee's purpose is to ensure that if council's operating in a regulated way, must provide adequate and transparent advice to all councillors. We don't get that. Now, that's not their fault, that's not the Audit Committee's fault, I lay no blame on them. It's clearly the fault of Councillor Cunningham and the Lord Mayor, and they've been failing in their duties.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Gibney.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on Item Two of Attachment A, Contract Number 534125, which includes a car park upgrade at Bayside United Football Club in Lotar, located in the Winham Manley Ward. This project is scheduled to begin next month. Bayside United Football Club will benefit from essential improvements to the front entrance of their car park. These upgrades will enhance the safety and accessibility of the facility for its nearly 800 players, their families, and the broader Winham Manley and Lotar communities. The works planned for the car park include resurfacing, painting new no-stopping-at-all-times lines, and landscaping. These enhancements will ensure safe entry and exit for the club's growing membership and the many families who visit regularly. The mission of the Bayside United Football Club is to make a positive impact on our community by providing life-enriching experiences through football for ages of individuals of all ages and skill levels, fostering a lifelong passion for the sport. The club is dedicated to leadership, development, and personal growth of its players, coaches, and volunteers, creating opportunities for them to be active community members through service partnerships and various other programmes. This thriving club is truly a community hub, with 67 teams, including 80 mums playing in their teams, and more than 150 volunteers. It's a testament to the local passion for the game. Their recently-launched Summer Series now hosts 76 teams of up to nine players each, attracting over 2,000 people on Friday evenings for their games. Under the forward-thinking leadership of President Andrew Dale, Bayside United has diversified its revenue streams, including a popular pizzeria with its own wood fire oven. I commend this valuable organisation for its commitment to promoting youth development and active participation in sport. Clubs like Bayside United form the grassroots of our community, bringing people together through sport and a shared purpose. I want to extend my thanks to President Andrew Dale and his hard-working committee, Kristin Barnes, Cleone Ladlaw, Stephen Stafford, and Deanna Brown, for their dedication to the club and our Bayside community. The club appreciates the Brisbane City Council's support for this project, which will help ensure that members and local residents can move safely in and out of the facility. Thank you.
Further speakers, Councillor Johnston.
Thank you. Yes, I rise to speak on all four items, if I have time. Firstly, with respect to the contracts and tendering report, I note that the Lord Mayor does tell residents that councillors should fund car park upgrades out of their suburban enhancement funds, but on the other hand, he's fully prepared to fund LNP community car park upgrades out of capital in LNP wards. So I think that's five this year at about $2 million. This demonstrates the hypocrisy of this Lord Mayor and his failure to govern in the best interests of everyone in the city. There are two car parks in horrific state in my ward, one at Yoranga Memorial Car Park and the other at Dunlop Park Car Park, and these car park upgrades are being neglected, and it is wrong that the Lord Mayor tells residents in my area that he doesn't fund car parks when today his hypocrisy has been exposed. Briefly on the Indrapilly Library, it's amazing that council has, I don't know, maybe listened to me, all the angry people about moving the library and so on, you know, it was the silliest idea I think the LNP had, and far from it being a decision they have made in the best interests of the community, we know why they have ditched their big shiny library and ward office upgrade, and that's because they've stuffed up the budget, and they've gone for a low-cost solution here, which is actually the best outcome for the community, because, you know, it is flat, air-conditioned, and easy access for people. Because, you know, it is flat, air-conditioned, and easy access for people. So, you know, they're standing up and taking credit for a decision that was a bad decision of theirs to start with, and has been forced on them by their own financial mismanagement and incompetence. But what we've learnt today is that this lease is only part of the story, with councillor Howard revealing that an unknown amount of money is going to be spent on the Indrapilly Library upgrade, and that figure should be disclosed immediately to residents. We should know how much money is going to be invested, and I call on the Lord Mayor in his speech in reply to tell us, because this does look like it is good financial outcome, but if, we don't know what the secret agreement is with the, the, the big multinational superannuation company that owns Indrapilly Shopping Town has negotiated with council. It could be millions, it could undermine the cheap rent, and I suspect that's probably what's going on, but anyway, this is a good outcome. I hope there will be a genuine consultation with the community in Indrapilly about what will happen to the leftover land near the Mogal Road Roundabout, whether it becomes a park, or it's given to Brisbane Housing Corporation as public housing. I, I don't know what might happen there, but I think that this council should have an open discussion with the community about the best use of that land, so that they are upfront with people about how it might be used for community good. Given the state of ugliness and the stuff-up that is the Mogal Road Roundabout project, creating some green space there might be a really good idea. But obviously, you know, the Brisbane Housing Corporation, it could well be a valuable opportunity for them to receive some council land to help with affordable or social housing. Anyway, a conversation must be had with the community about this. I don't think the Lord Mayor should just sell it off, and I think that it should be an open and transparent discussion. Briefly on the flood issue before us today, you know what? If we'd awaited another couple of weeks, it could be, there might be some changes coming at the state level about how planning will happen. You know, the, the Lord Mayor today stood up and blamed the outgoing State Labor Government for many things. He won't be able to do that for much longer, I guess, with his mates in up at George Street. But I note that we are absolutely not doing enough to help residents mitigate the impact of flooding in their communities. It's been neglected by this administration since after 2011. Much more needs to be done on backflow valves, drainage, flood mitigation, and, and this Lord Mayor has squibbed it. Flood mapping is an important part of that, and the transparency of the flood mapping is good, but unfortunately, there are some insurers who are taking advantage of these flood maps to push up insurance premiums, and that's not right, and council should be doing more to make sure the insurers are not misusing these maps to force up the cost of insurance.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item C, the minor amendment T. Madam Chair, as the Lord Mayor said, this minor administrative amendment package proposes changes to maintain the currency of council's city plan. Changes proposed include updating the flood overlay maps, specifically the Creek Waterway flood planning areas to reflect the Brighton Creek, Kedron Brook, Sandy Creek, Tuong Creek, and Witten Creek catchment flood studies, updating relevant parts of the planning scheme to reflect changes made to the Planning Regulation 2017, under the Justice Decriminalising Sex Work and Other Legislation Amendment Regulation 2024, and the Planning and Other Legislation Amendment Regulation 2024, including defined terms, tables of assessment, development codes, and planning scheme policies. And finally, improving the effectiveness and usability of the planning scheme through enhancing the format and presentation and undertaking tax refinements. As the Lord Mayor said earlier, as Brisbane is built on a floodplain, we need to continually include the latest information to ensure residents are better prepared for natural disasters. We also understand that catchment conditions can change over time, as well as updates to best-practice flood modelling methods. As such, we need to ensure the latest flood studies are included in city plan, specifically within the flood overlay and mapping, to ensure any new development is undertaken using the latest information available. Madam Chair, I have previously spoken in this chamber about the legislative changes made by the previous state government to decriminalise sex work businesses and the impacts these will have to our local planning scheme. Some of the changes include, and the Lord Mayor mentioned this, brothel is no longer a land-use term, and with a new administrative term, sex work businesses being introduced. A sex work business will now be considered as either a shop or a home-based business with a maximum of two workers and two visitors at one time for a home-based business. Assessment of home-based businesses is capped at code and not an assessable development. This will result in no public notification being required before this type of business can commence. Local governments are prohibited from introducing local laws or future amendments to local planning schemes that target sex work businesses. This includes no zoning or locational requirement changes. As a result, minor T proposes minor administrative changes to ensure city plan reflects the legislative changes made at a state level. Madam Chair, it was disheartening that these changes were originally proposed during the local government election caretaker period, reducing the ability for local governments to outline their concerns. However, I can confirm that not only did council provide comment to the Queensland Law Reform Commission, but I also personally wrote to the previous Labour Planning Minister in April, expressing my concerns with regards to planning across this city. However, I never received a response from the then minister. Unfortunately, Madam Chair, we will not know the full impact, impact of these changes for some time. However, as a result of these state changes, there is a real risk that these types of businesses could be collated, located in residential zones with other sensitive uses such as schools, childcare facilities, and public open spaces. Council is also working through the impacts to compliance and enforcement processes, as well as the regulation of advertising devices for sex work businesses. However, I am hopeful that with an LMP state government, there will be a more collaborative approach to planning and policy changes in future. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Listen, I rise to speak on clause A, contract and tendering, and I'll start off with contract two, which is the car park upgrades. And thanks to the Lord, thank you, Lord Mayor, for that, for that shortlist, but I'm a bit sad not to hear that the McEwan Park upgrade, car park upgrade wasn't included in that, being that we have a approximate figure of a bit over $100,000 to do, to seal it, actually. And I would have thought that for that small amount of money, considering that the others are, the other three are, of course, going to be 1.5 million, that it would have been considered in this, in this, in this contract. Maybe, maybe if you save any money on the contingency fund, if there's any contingency, some fading, maybe you can send a little bit our way, because the Ipswich Darts Club, or the, sorry, the Anala Darts Club, who have occupied the, the clubhouse in McEwan, in McEwan Park for some years now, actually is, is the centre of, I suppose, the south side or the western suburb centre for, for the darts, for darts club, for dart, people playing darts, and for a number of darts clubs as well. They hold Queensland championships there as well, and I think they even held an Australian championship. So it's a little bit embarrassing when all these cars show up on a, on a weekly basis, actually, and they have to park on top of roadbase. And roadbase, it's not really well-maintained as well. So maybe some consideration should have been given to McEwan Park. Now, in regards to contract 11, I have some interest in what I'm about to ask, and that is, of course, the, the delivery of passenger and, and light commercial vehicles. These are obviously the replacement ones, in most cases, for existing fleet, $44 million, and I wonder about the money when you think about it, but I don't know exactly how many vehicles are involved here for that $44 million. But what I would like to know, from councillor Hutton, I know you won't probably be speaking today as Chair, but maybe next week, is what percentage of the fleet that we're replacing are going to be EV or hybrid? I just have some curiosity. I've just got my, I've just got my EV car, and I tell you what, it's, it's fantastic. I'll tell you what, I, I did have some concerns about EVs, about how I was going to be able to operate and all the rest of it, but honestly, the amount of charging stations around, in my area at least, there's, there's no issue in regards to being able to undertake that work. And just finally, wanted to speak to that, that direct mail issue that our, the opposition leader raised in regards to the, that, that rates, that pensioner tax for sending out the, out the rates notices. I, I, and, and he said that, honestly, so how are we going to send out the, how are we going to send out the dump vouchers? We're not really saving any money, it's just giving that opportunity for the Lord Mayor to send out the dump vouchers with a lovely letter saying, how great am I? I'm giving you these dump vouchers. And I just wanted to reiterate what the opposition leader said in that respect, because it's just appalling, actually, what, what's going on. It's just, it's just a grab for cash, that, that, that amount of money that's going to be coming into the coffers of Brisbane City Council from hard-working ratepayers, especially those pensioners that, as he's, as the Lord Mayor said, are on fixed incomes. So every dollar counts to a pension, I'll tell you right now, with the cost of living, and just one more tax grab, one more grab for their cash, and it's just an appalling situation. Thank you, Chair.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney that the meeting adjourned for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber. Further speakers, councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I rise to speak on item C, the minor administrative amendment package T. As the Lord Mayor said, this amendment updates the city plan flood overlay to reflect the latest flood mapping as part of the Kedron Brook, Brighton Creek, Tuong Creek, Sandy Creek, and Witten Creek flood studies. We undertake a rolling programme of these studies to make sure that residents are armed with the critical information that they need ahead of the summer storm season. The flood awareness maps are already live on council's website, so residents can access information they need to prepare. The city plan update before us today provides a more in-depth technical information to ensure future development is built to the appropriate level of flood resilience. This information has undergone a comprehensive, peer-reviewed analysis, and has also informed the floodwise property reports for each of the individual properties affected. And this is more than 8,000 properties, Madam Chair, so it was a significant body of work to, and to take very complex data and make it easy for residents to be able to access and understand. In fact, we pride ourselves on making our flood data accessible and easy to use so that all Brisbane residents can understand their flood risk without having to go to the expense of engaging a hydrological engineer. After the 2022 flood event, our entire flood awareness platform was updated and made even easier to use, and it remains the most visited webpage on the council's website. So we know that residents are eager to access this information as soon as they can, and that's why we've updated the flood awareness maps before these city plan changes go live on the 6th of December this year. We'll also write to these residents, as we always do, to let them know that their flood risk has changed. And as I said, Madam Chair, this is part of a rolling programme, we are continually improving the quality of our flood information, and this work remains underway, and I commend this item to the chamber. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good. Further speakers.
Point of order, I'd just like to, sorry. I'd like to take the all items in Sariatum for voting purposes, please.
For voting purposes.
Yeah, all, each of them, yeah, separated.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item C, which is the issue in relation to the flood reports that we have before us today. I have a number of concerns about this flood report, and I suppose it's a spin that the administration is putting on this, and what I heard before, even the Lord Mayor put on, on what a wonderful job they're doing. What a wonderful job they're doing. And it was quite inaccurate. He stated at one time, we were the ones who, who told people about their flood, about the flood impacts on their property. We did it, the LMP did it. Well, in the briefing this morning that we got on, on this information, the officer said that that information had been available since the 60s, and what the officer said was that you had to apply for that information. So it hasn't been the LMP who have done this great transparency act, it's been available by this council for a long time. What we do have now is available online. And fair enough, it should be available online, I think the more transparency, the better. And I also think we should be letting residents know about their properties being affected. So let's look at some of the data in this report. We know that for Kedron Brook, there's going to be 4,207 properties affected by the changes in this report. We know for Tuong Creek, 861 either residents or business will be affected, Sandy Creek, 27, and for Brighton, 687. This is significant. These figures are significant because they have a major impact on people's insurance. And the insurance industry uses these figures to put people's charges up. And I know the number of residents I have who've been through this process, and a council will say, your property is flood-affected, and those residents will say they're not. They'll challenge it, and councillors say you are, and then they're stuck with thousands of dollars of increase to their insurance bill. What isn't available here, it's talked about a lot by the LMP but never delivered, is flood mitigation. We see it spoken about in this, it was spoken about committee today, but they don't deliver it, they don't do it. I know in my own ward, they've just refused to do a project. We see no transparency in relation to what they're doing with flood mitigation, we see it nowhere online, we don't see 200,000 people saying, hey, what's happening in my local creek? Let's see, let's see what infrastructure council's doing. So this administration patting itself on the back for this flimsy piece of work is shocking. Because not, what they're not doing is they're not actually delivering anything on the ground that actually reduces this problem, that fixes this problem, and actually helps resolve the issue of flooding for so many residents in our city. I think this is actually a really sad report. It's a sad report that we're brought to this chamber, that the LMP have said they won't notify residents, they won't let them know that their property is now impacted by And I think that is wrong for residents. The only way they know their property is being impacted by these changes is when they see their insurance bills go up. So, yeah, I think there's nothing to cry about here, it's just the same old miserable behaviour by an administration that is so caught up in its own hubris. I think, I think it's really sad what the administration has done, and I call on the administration to actually do a website stating what you're doing to actually deal with flooding, ward by ward, creek by creek, to actually show where you're spending the money, what you're doing, and what you're delivering.
Further speakers. Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I stand to speak on item D. So this item seeks council's approval to appoint a fourth member of the council independent audit committee for the rest of the term, and to make some minor amendments to the audit- to the audit committee charter as legislatively required by us. Council has a commitment to strong corporate governance and careful management of every single ratepayer dollar. We have a rigorous internal audit regime in this city with independent oversight through the audit committee and of course, the Queensland Audit Office. Our internal audit process brings a systematic, disciplined and risk-based approach to evaluate and improve the effectiveness of risk management, internal controls and governance processes. Internal audit helps us effectively manage and continuously improve our council systems, our processes and our controls. Audit actions have clear accountability and dates which are monitored by internal audit to mitigate all the risks which are identified. Then there is another layer of accountability on top of that through the oversight of the independent audit committee. Audit committee comprises members appointed through an independent and external recruitment process. Currently, we have Ms Gail Duke serving as the chair along with Mr Michael Wills and Renita Gerard serving as independent members. Today, we are appointing a fourth member of the committee following an external process which was undertaken to select a suitably qualified and new independent member. We're also seeking to make minor amendments to the charter, which is reviewed annually, to ensure that the committee functions in conjunction with both national and international standards. These amendments are routine and seek to amend sections 7.2 and 7.3 following legal advice regarding the wording relating to the appointment of new members by ENC during the four-year term. Section 8 is also being amended to align wording with the new international framework, which will more explicitly call out the role of the audit committee in relation to the chief internal auditor and other internal audit controls. These are very technical minor amendments which make sure that the charter aligns with the overarching standards. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank committee chair, Gail Dukes, and independent members, Michael and Renita, for their continued work for the people of Brisbane and thank Daniella for taking on the extremely important role and I commend her appointment and this item to the chamber.
Further speakers. Councillor Howard. Further speakers.
Speakers, we'll now put the all items to the vote. We'll put item A to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. All ayes to my right and noes to my left, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and six abstentions.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now put item B to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it. We now put item C. Division has been called.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Chongwa. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes having have it, the voting being 24 in favour.
So that is carried. All councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now put item C to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division is called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right, noes to my left, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and seven abstentions.
Motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now put item D to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right, noes to my left, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour, one against and six abstentions.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee decisions.
Madam Chair, I move the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as the delegate of council during the spring recess 2024. On matters usually considered by that committee, be noted.
Seconded.
Has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of the council during spring recess 2024 on matters usually considered by that committee, be noted. Lord Mayor.
Yes, Madam Chair. Before I move to these items, I just wanted to table some documents. As you know, we always table financial statements from council entities at the first council meeting after they're made available. And so, this being the first council meeting back, we have a few to table. I table the annual financial statements of City Parkland Services, the Museum of Brisbane, the Brisbane Economic Development Agency and the Brisbane Powerhouse. Thank you, Billy. So moving on to the two items on the agenda here, they're both relating to land acquisitions for key projects. The first one, item A, relates to the Kingston Smith Drive upgrade and relates to an outstanding issue which we finally reached a resolution to. As you know, the upgrade was completed a little while ago and has been a fantastic outcome and enables, you know, the Hamilton North Shore precinct to go ahead and potentially be the Olympic Village. It enables many houses to be built. None of this would be possible if we still had the goat track of Kingston Smith Drive that we had in the past. And certainly there would be no public and active transport options there. You wouldn't be able to run a Gold City Glider on a congested two-lane road. You wouldn't be able to walk, cycle or scoot along the riverfront if we hadn't invested in this upgrade. And so it's been a great outcome and it will enable more homes to be built and an Olympic legacy outcome as well. And so I think we all agree that that project was very important. We're also thankful that that project was completed when it was and not in a time of great inflation. And so looking back, the investment that was made at the time, while it was a significant investment, if it was done today, would be significantly more to do the same thing. This particular submission relates to land on the corner of Kingston Smith Drive and Nudgee Road. There is currently a retirement and aged care facility that's been built there and been in place for many years. But as part of the upgrade, there was a significant land take off that private owner, including the need to build a slip lane or turning lane from Kingston Smith Drive into Nudgee Road. Negotiations have been ongoing with the landowner since 2017 and after a lengthy process involving industry professionals and valuation experts, this matter was referred to the land court. As part of the process, council and the landowner went to mediation and an agreement was reached just recently on a settlement for the resumed lane. The details relating to the compensation remain commercially confident as is the standard practice for matters of this kind. Item B relates to the Brisbane Metro project, in particular, the acquisition of land at 71 School Road, Rochdale. Now, this site was originally identified for the Metro Depot early in the project, but one thing that definitely changed as we did further work on the project, and that was the need to accommodate the expansion of Brisbane Metro to other parts of the city. And so what that meant is that the depot not only had to accommodate the first 60 metro vehicles, but it had to be set up to accommodate up to 100 metro vehicles with future expansion. Obviously, there will be other depots required, particularly on the north side, but because we needed to have a large depot capable of accommodating more metro vehicles, there were some acquisitions that needed to occur in addition to the council and TMR owned land. And this property was acquired in March 2019, 71 School Road. As is the case with some resumptions, council had ongoing negotiations with the previous property owners relating to the land value. This item before us today is because those discussions have now come to an end and an agreement has been reached. Council has already paid in advance against the compensation. And so generally what happens when there's a gap in valuation on a resumption, we will, we will take the lower value in that negotiation and we'll pay in advance of that lower value and then we'll continue to negotiate. And if there's any further increase in the valuation as a result of negotiations, then we pay the additional outstanding amount. And so a significant portion of this, of this money has been paid already and this settlement will finalise that matter with the payment of the remaining outstanding balance based on the agreed valuation. I commend these two particular items to the chamber. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair, I rise to speak on both of these items. Clause A, we will ultimately support these two. Clause A is the Kingston Smith Drive one, of course, which has been going on a very, very long time. A project, this, you know, process of which has been brought before us for both of these. Negotiations around compensation for land resumptions appear to be fair and transparent, unlike the delivery and budget of both of these projects. Unfortunately, the Kingston Smith Drive project and the Brisbane Metro Bus project to date. You know, this is probably the last piece, I guess, for the Kingston Smith Drive project to fully expend that contingency, that enormous $100 million contingency that was included in that project. Everything that could possibly have gone wrong did. And this, this isn't necessarily one of those. This is just a standard, understand the, the former owner of that land wanted to get what they thought was a fair and reasonable price. And obviously, they saw the eye-watering amount of money that the LMP was spending on this project. And that through negotiations, obviously, landed on a price of which is now ultimately acceptable to the, to council, to the previous owner and to the court, as well as a negotiated outcome. That one, that compensation claim was lodged, I think, at the beginning of 2017. So it seems like a lifetime ago, that one. The, it's been roughly six years, I think, so 20, I guess that's 2018 since the, the Metro Bus one was initiated, that property where the depot is there now. Again, the outcome of this, which we think is probably pretty fair and transparent, unlike, unlike the delivery of that project, which has seen a $600 million blowout a years. Well, it was supposed to be a year delayed, but we're now not sure. We're now not sure, the Lord Mayor was just talking now about the expansion to the northern suburbs of the Metro Bus and out to the Bayside area. There's no agreement for that anymore, as we understand. David Christofouli, the premier, said he had a long and fruitful conversation with the Prime Minister about the Olympics the other day and other things. I'm not sure whether the Lord Mayor's had that opportunity yet to speak to the premier, but I'm sure if he had, he would have raised the issue around funding agreements for the Metro Bus project actually starting, rather than just one route to UQ operating, but the actual network starting. And a conversation around growth funding for bus services in the suburbs of Brisbane, which is the big, the big missing link in all of this. But these two items appear okay to us, so we will support them today.
Further speakers, councillor Wines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just rise to discuss item A in this report. And of course, I think it's important to remind councillors that the Kingston Smith Drive project is a landmark project that increases the operational usage of not only that, the local residents, that community, but is an important link through the gateway into Brisbane City, provides access to industrial land in that community, excuse me, that is used by the whole city. But also, as part of the upgrade, provides travel time savings and convenience improvements for more than 70,000 motor vehicles per day, whether they be private, public or freight. And it also provides an opportunity that did not exist before for active travel and for much improved pedestrian interaction. It is a project that has markedly improved the operation of this city from a transport point of view for all of the, the means which we move around the city, including industrial and increased economic uses. The item we're considering today is the authorisation of compensation for a land resumption associated with the intersection of Nudgee Road and Kingston Smith Drive for a amount of land to the value of 1,582 square metres from a of land to the value of 1,582 square meters from a developable site at that location. Now, as a result of the land required for, as the Lord Mayor rightly identified, a series of slip lanes, which I trust many of us have used and have materially benefited the north side's transport operations, because of that requirement to do that upgrade in the road, we required this land. That resumption significantly limited the ability of the, in the view of the proponent of that retirement village, limited the capacity for dwellings in that site and has sought compensation. We have gone into mediation with that, with that firm, and we have reached the figure associated in the commercial in confidence figures. So it is, has been a long-running negotiation. However, it is coming to a conclusion. These sorts of activities are normal as part of very large projects, of which the Kingston Smith Drive upgrade project was one. So as we look now to finalize this negotiation and put the final clarification on all work associated to Kingston Smith Drive upgrade.
Further speakers, councillor Murph.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak to item B, the offer to settle compensation for land resumed for the Brisbane Metro project. And one of the most important pieces of infrastructure that we're building as part of the Metro project is the depot at Rochedale, a state-of-the-art facility. It is Australia's largest electric bus depot. Works at the site are now complete and operational, supporting metro services on Route 169. And this is a depot that had over 400,000 hours of construction put into it, which has transformed this now 10 hectare site, a component of which is made up of this land resumption into a state-of-the-art facility. The depot is now operational and supporting our services on the 169 preview. And Chair, once a bus depot is operational, it's often very rare for residents to see what one looks like, or for the public to get inside and have a look. And we were able to do that just the other week. On the 13th of October, we had the depot community open day, which provided residents and visitors a glimpse into the operations of a major electric bus depot. And I thought it was a fantastic opportunity to welcome residents from all corners of Brisbane to see how Brisbane's newest public transport system will work. And the open day included a chance to explore inside the metro, live entertainment, food trucks, and activities for the kids. I know councillor Cassidy would have been sad to miss out on that amazing and incredible day, but he also missed out on the last session where we were able to take members of the Transport Committee in to have a first look at the depot. I know members of the committee were very impressed by what they saw. I heard councillor Kim say that she had fallen in love with the Metro Depot, and I think, Chair, there's thousands of residents who agree with that statement. We had a massive turnout for the open day, about 3,000 residents who turned out to the site at Rochedale. The line to hop on board the metro was long all day. Chair, we got some great, we got some great feedback from attendees. One of them said, quote, "Of all the events I have been to across New South Wales and Queensland, hospital openings, TMR, road open days, et cetera, this was by far the best event I have ever attended. Everyone was so knowledgeable, and there was always something, someone to talk to about the project and the depot. It was so interesting, such a great day out," end quote. Now, the depot's location, Madam Chair, at School Road, is one of the real benefits of the site, as it allows metros to seamlessly integrate into the southeast busway. And we were only able to secure this site by purchasing a number of properties at Rochedale. And the item before us today relates to one of these properties, 71 School Road at Rochedale. We acquired this property in March of 2019. And as the Lord Mayor mentioned, the item before us today relates to finalizing the agreed value of the property. We have been negotiating with the former owners of this site for some time, and we have now agreed on a fair and reasonable value for the land. We've already paid in advance against the compensation, as is laid out in the documents, to the owners, so this submission simply seeks approval for council to pay the difference between those two figures, and those figures are commercial in confidence, as is laid out in the document. What I will say, Madam Chair, is the facility that we built at Rochedale is an impressive one, but it belongs to the people of Brisbane, so we were very proud to share that facility with them just a few weeks ago, and I thank councillors who have expressed that they will support this motion. Thank you.
Any further speakers? Lord Mayor, we'll now put items A and B to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to, the motion is carried, we'll now move to councillor Hutton, City Standards Committee.
Madam Chair, I move that the report setting out the decision of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the spring recess 2024 on matters usually considered by the City Standards Committee to be noted.
Second it.
Has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Adaman, that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the spring recess 2024 on matters usually considered by the City Standards Committee be noted. Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a fairly straightforward petition that is requesting council remove four leopard trees from the footpath at Tamarang Street in Taragindi. As I know, many of us have got leopard trees in our own communities, and it is something that we no longer plant because they are quite troublesome trees, but they do provide an excellent canopy for our city and definitely are very good at shade cover. So we have been working with this resident to try and get a better outcome, and unfortunately, we're keeping the trees in place, and we have referred them to JLT because they were having some damage issues. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Oh, thanks very much, Deputy Chair. Look, we'll support this recommendation today, although I do just want to assist councillor Hutton with some up-to-date information about council's use of leopard trees. If you look out that window right behind you, you'll see a brand-new leopard tree planted on Adelaide Street, obviously in keeping with the leopard trees that are already there, but if council's policy is that leopard trees are no longer planted, then there's an exemption, obviously, in Adelaide Street in the city. I don't want to see that exemption extended into the suburbs of Brisbane, because I agree with you, the trouble that leopard trees have caused. We have had in the past, before councillor Hutton's time, various policies within the arb team about replacements of leopard trees, so planting trees, allowing them to get established close by, very close by, might be in the other side of a driveway, and if they grow for two or three or four years, get to be to a mature enough size, then those leopard trees can be removed, so there isn't a net loss of canopy through different ways. And, you know, in my time, I've seen those policies come and go, also policies around leopard tree trimming, which, you know, the trimming would occur when the flowering's happening, so the seed pods aren't as bad, that seems to have fallen off a bit. So I think we're in furious agreement about the future use of leopard trees, but would certainly encourage council to have another look at all of those leopard tree policies, because they're not an issue just for these people in Taragindi, they're an issue for people in my ward, and your ward, and everyone's ward, I'm sure, as well.
Any further debate? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. I will reassure councillor Cassidy that we will continue to work with our residents in regards to leopard trees. I think we have all had that same shared experience. I understand that the tree that was replaced out the front here was obviously in keeping with what the streetscape is already in existence, and understand that we don't have leopard trees on the palate at the present time, and it will not be in the future, so thank you.
Now we'll put the report to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you. I have petition from residents who live in Lenell Street, extremely concerned about the high rate of crime in their local area, and asking for installation of cameras for security measures.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I have a petition asking for wildlife fencing along Hamilton Road.
Councillor Dixon, may I have a motion for receipt of the petitions?
Chair, I move that petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second.
It was moved by councillor Dixon, seconded by councillor Strong. That all petitions are presented to be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. The ayes have it. Councillor, are there any statements required as a result of an offer of independent assessor or councillor ethics committee order? There have been no councillors rising on their feet. Are there any matters of general business? Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I wish to rise to speak on two items of general business, Shop Local and Hamilton Ward and the recent state election that occurred on the weekend. This month, I have been running an initiative to help small businesses across Hamilton Ward called Shop Local Month, to let businesses know how the Shuna Council can support them and also promote them to the local community, to raise awareness about what great local businesses we have in our own backyard. As a newish councillor, and I'm so new now, I wasn't fully aware of everything on offer by the council until I was lucky enough to sit on the Economic Development Committee with the deputy mayor, while I was sitting there in committee one day going, wow, I really need to get the word out in Hamilton Ward, because the businesses have a lot of support from council, and especially in a time where there are many challenges. So over the month of September, I letterboxed businesses across the Hamilton Ward with an invitation to participate in Shop Local Month, and also information about how council supports small business, including our 24/7 business hotline, business hubs both in the CBD and Nunda, as well as the Brisbane Business Facebook group, which council runs amongst other things. Approximately 20 local businesses responded back to participate, and the feedback has been fantastic, so it's definitely something that I will continue to do on a yearly basis, and hopefully it gets bigger and better. One local business owner commented that she didn't know how much council offered in support until she got the letter, and she signed up immediately. Others commented that it was easy to participate as my office took responsibility for the design of the voucher and distribution. Once we locked in the businesses and their offer, we put together a voucher sheet that we letterbox dropped across the Hamilton Ward, as well as advertising through social media channels. Throughout the month, there's been lunch deals, beauty therapist offers, discounted podiatry consults, you can even get a discount on a vet consultation for your pet. Now, October doesn't finish until Thursday, so there's still time to participate for residents who have not, who haven't already taken advantage of the offers on offer. Finally, on the state election that occurred on the weekend, I want to congratulate Tim Nichols on his reelection efforts on Saturday, as well as a shout-out to our hard-working LMP candidate, Christian Duffy in McConnell, who, while he was not successful, he put up a well-hard-fought campaign, and you certainly had to admire the energy that he brought over the last few months. I'm looking forward to another four years working with Tim on local issues such as public transport, particularly with the election of an LMP government, which means a commitment to make the Gold City Glider bus service a reality in partnership with Brisbane City Council, which will go from Hamilton to Wollongaba. This is a much-needed public transport connection that will service the growing needs of the Hamilton North Shore and Portside Precinct, which is rapidly growing. The reelection of Tim Nichols and also the election of an LMP government will see a state contribution of $4 million to the Brothers Rugby Club at Crosby Park towards their master plan development. That will also become a reality now. Many in our community will be excited about the direction that this will take one of Hamilton Ward's much-loved sporting clubs in. Personally, I'm delighted at working together with Tim, who coincidentally is also a former councillor for Hamilton Ward, so, Tim, congratulations again, and I guess we have many more joint mobile offices ahead of us in the next four years, working together to keep Brisbane moving. So I will conclude my remarks there. Chair, thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Chongwa.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on green space, sports grounds, deep planting, and Barabyn Victoria Park. This council, over the last 20 years, has not been investing in green space or our sports fields in order to keep pace with Brisbane's population growth. Their main priority, perhaps their only true goal, is to grow the city as fast as possible, a city that has, that was historically gifted with such rich biodiversity of the Maiwaa River, our great parks and historical trees planted throughout this city. It is clear that our Brisbane green space is under attack. I have already spoken in these chambers on the 27th of August about the dire shortage and lack of investment of sports grounds by this LMP administration over the last 20 years. Our publicly-owned green space is now being sold off. An example is 21 Sylvan Road in To Wong on flood-prone land that is being sold off by this council administration. This green space can be valued and invested as a pocket park. Thousands of historic mature trees are also being cleared through private development. Every week in my office, we have residents horrified at trees being removed by a new development because there are insufficient protections for established trees on private land. My office and I recently organised a public forum in Milton, the high-density riverside part of Milton. The residents are pleading with me for more green space, more street trees, and more deep planting. This council has been giving discounts of up to 75% away to their developer mates for important infrastructure charges. At the same time, they have been introducing a culture within this council that allows developers to remove all the trees they want. Worst of all, our deep planting targets of 10% are completely ignored. At my recent public forum in Milton, along with the Brisbane Federal MP Stephen Bates, I presented analysis of high-rise developments recently approved in this Milton high-density area. The Brisbane City Plan multiple dwelling code has a target of 10% deep planting. Deep planting, of course, means open-sky planting at ground level. However, in our planning system, wealthy developers can negotiate their way through the conditions to find compromises that can increase their profit margins. So in practice, that has translated in average of 4% of deep planting being conditioned for the last seven development applications that we analysed in this high-density area. I will repeat that again. An average of 4% deep planting has been conditioned by this Brisbane City Council administration, instead of 10% deep planting for the last seven development applications in high-density part of Milton. I also mentioned Barabyn. As we heard from Sue Bremner today, Barabyn Victoria Park is also under attack. We all know the Lord Mayor will not commit to opposing any new Olympic stadium in Barabyn. Of course, the council point to the new master plan for four years in the making. We now have $120 million committed to stage one from the federal government, state government, and council. But here, but have a look at closely at stage one plans that are being called the park catalyst works. I'll show you this document here. You will see that the only development place, sorry, you will see that the only developments taking place all around the edges of a council-managed part of Barabyn. This council is spending $120 million on new car parks, pathway loops, and new offices all around the outer edge. Even the pump track and one playground are also around the outer edges. The stage one plans show a gaping huge hole with no upgrades right in the middle of Victoria Park, big enough for an Olympic stadium. I appeal to this LMP council, please do more to protect Brisbane's green space, to ensure no Olympic stadium is built in our most iconic green space at Barabyn, and please invest in more long-term green space and sports grounds that the residents of Brisbane desperately need for play, for health, for recreation, for sports, and to navigate the oncoming, oncoming effects and current effects of climate change and heat waves in this city.
Further speakers, councillor Adaman.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I rise to speak about Saturday's state election and to congratulate both the state member from Mogal, Dr Christian Rowan, and new premier, David Christofouli, on their outstanding wins. Dr Rowan's reelection was a reward for his hard work and untiring commitment to the outer western suburbs over the past nine years. Given the similarity of the Pugunbah Ward and Mogal electorates, I see almost daily the effort he puts into delivering for his residents. He has encountered many frustrations since being elected in 2015, given the disgraceful neglect of successive state labour governments when it comes to services and infrastructure in the western suburbs. Case in point number one was former Transport Minister Mark Bailey walking away from a solution to fix congestion at the Kenmore Roundabout and Mogal Road, and instead redirecting funding to a thought bubble on Mogal Road that should never see the light of day. Case in point number two was success of education. Case in point number two was successive education ministers stubbornly refusing to commit to a new high school in the western suburbs despite Kenmore High bursting at the seams. The state labour candidates parroting the same lines during the election campaign that a second high school wasn't a priority didn't help his chances one little bit. But Chair, now with the election of an LMP state government, all of that is about to change and for the better. Dr Rowan has announced a package of commitments to be delivered to the Mogal electorate over the next four years. These commitments were a result from listening to residents and consulting with local community groups to determine their priorities. They include safety upgrades at the Kenmore Roundabout and Our Lady of the Rosary School on Mogal Road, funding for a comprehensive business case including the required planning for a new local high school, delivering a more reliable public transport and easing of congestion through an integrated road and public transport plan for the western suburbs, delivering safer pedestrian and active transport, supporting local sport with a new footpath to council's Mogal District Sports Park, funding for a new community and neighbourhood centre, funding for our local pony clubs and creek catchment groups, plus the Hut Environmental and Community Association and infrastructure improvements at both the Mount Crosby Bowls Club and Brookfield Showgrounds. Chair, finally, some observations from last Saturday's result in the Mogal electorate. Clearly, the once mighty Labour Party remains on the nose in the western suburbs. They did improve on the 11% result they achieved in my election earlier this year, but they're not winning anything with a two in front of their primary vote. And there was nothing for the cult party of protests to be excited about either. As it did in March, the Greens' primary vote went backwards in our community on the weekend. It was clear talking to people at the polling booths that they are disgusted with the Greens' anti-Semitic views and their support for terrorist organisations, not to mention the outlawed CMFEU. And people are now coming to the realisation that they are not able and will never be able to deliver on their outlandish and destructive promises. It would be fair to assume that the federal member for Ryan will be a little bit nervous about her chances of reelection based on both the council and state election results, and so she should be. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Struck.
Thank you Chair. I rise to speak on a couple of items of general business, see how we go with time, being that it's half as much as we used to have. I want to give a big shout out to Minister McBain, who visited my ward from the Albanese government, having a look over some of the infrastructure, infrastructure investment that the Albanese government is making in my ward and right across Brisbane as well. I believe there's about 29 projects, and she came out and I was aware of about three that she visited in my, well, two in my ward and one in the Jamboree Ward. Again, a huge investment for a community group, the Forest Lake Rugby Union Club, who was up for a bill of approximately a half a million dollars to reconstruct some, some seating, which was part of the, which is part of the retaining wall, which was hundreds of metres long. And you can just imagine, a little club like that was never going to be able to, to fund that, so thank you Albanese government for seeing that much needed, that much needed money. Also, I was able to go out and have a look, well, she was wanting to, keen to have a look, of course, at the Woolaroo and Blunder Road intersection upgrade, which the Albanese government is putting 1.5 million dollars into. Council's putting the rest, which is the lion's share actually, the rest in that. But what was, I thought was really interesting was that the one over at Dandenong Road and Soraco Street, the federal government is putting in the whole lot, I believe, about $4 million. So it's just not in LMP, just not in labour wards, but it's also in LMP, so they're sharing it, they're sharing the love. And, and I just want to have a big shout out to Minister McBain and the Albanese government because they're investing records amount of money in Brisbane, despite what the people on, despite what the members on the other side are saying. I believe it's, these two programmes was an increase, or at least rose to recovery, was an increase of over 40%, right across, right across Brisbane. So thank you for that. And I, and finally, I just want to give a big shout out to Margie Knightengale, who was the Labour Member for Anala, who won the by-election about six months ago, and it was tough. The by-election was really, really tough, as all by-elections are, but she, she was able to retain the seat for Labour. But over the last six months, I have never seen anyone, and I've been through 10 state elections, I've never seen anyone work so hard and so quickly to engage the community and especially the diverse community that we have in the Anala electorate, right? It was at the after, at the after-party at the Durack Bowls Club on Saturday, honestly, it looked like the United Nations. The grassroots support that she achieved in that six months was phenomenal. And I just want to pay tribute to her, and she is going to be one of the best state members that Anala will ever see, I believe, well, at least in my lifetime anyways, right? And what she was able to do with the vote, she virtually, she turned it, she increased her, her two-party preferred by 20, over 20%. And that is, that is phenomenal in any electorate, right? And so she should be congratulated, and I really look forward to working with her, and I know the Honourable Milton Dick is also looking very much forward to working with her over the next four years to deliver those services that keep being delivered into the Anala electorate. Thank you Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Givney.
Thank you Chair. I rise today to speak on the outstanding success of this year's Winham Halloween Parade, a beloved event that continues to bring together our community in celebration and support our local businesses. Thousands turned up in Winham CBD for a frightful afternoon on Sunday. First and foremost, I would like to extend my sincere thanks to the Winham Commerce Inc for their dedication in organising this event. Special recognition goes to Chair Bernie Nayland, whose hard work and passion have helped shape the parade into the fantastic community celebration that we enjoyed this year. Bernie's leadership and commitment to Winham Commerce Inc and our wider business community made this event a highlight in the Winham CBD. We're also honoured to have our Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna join us on Sunday to serve as a guest judge for the best dressed competition, a difficult task given the incredible creativity of costumes on display. The Lord Mayor's presence brought an added excitement and we're grateful for his support and involvement in our community. A major highlight of the event was the vibrant support shown for our Winham CBD's small businesses. Before the parade, a trick or treat was offered from many of the local retailers. This allowed these businesses an invaluable opportunity to connect with both residents and visitors. Many stores were open, welcoming parade goers and showcasing their unique retail businesses that Winham, the Winham CBD offers. Our local bars, restaurants and takeaway establishments were heaving with costumed patrons and families enjoying the festivities. Additionally, the food trucks that joined the event offered fantastic options for everyone attending. I would like to make special mention to Caitlin Haig, Director of Bayside Dance and her team in their coordination of the stage performances. From school rock bands, dance groups, community bands and the best dressed competition, there was something for everyone. Most importantly, of course, the costumes. Families, children and even pets got involved with creativity on full display in every corner. The incredible costumes brought vibrancy to the streets, making Winham come alive in a way everyone and our community was happy to be a part of. Our Winham Ward Office was particularly hilarious as Dalmatians and me as Cruella de Vil. Events like this don't happen without community support. Many thanks to Scotty Keed, who coordinated the parade, and to our volunteer groups, Winham Scouts and SES, who were the marshals for the event. We thank the Rotary Club of Winham Manly and the Queensland Police for their support too. It is also important to acknowledge the major sponsors, Ampol and Brisbane City Council for their ongoing support of the Winham Halloween Parade. Finally, many teams of our, of our Brisbane City Council ensure events like this are safe and well organised, and I'd like to thank all the officers that were involved. In closing, the Winham Halloween Parade is a shining example of our community's strength, working together, celebrating together and supporting each other. My deepest thanks go out to everyone who made this year's event a success and I look forward to supporting more into the future.
Further speakers, councillor Collier.
Thanks very much Chair. Just one item of general business today. The Labour councillors on this side of the chamber are calling on the Lord Mayor to immediately turn the power and barbecues back on at Musgrave Park and Carrilpa Point Park. We believe the Lord Mayor should be advocating for people sleeping rough or experiencing homelessness, not demonising them. Those experiencing housing insecurity and sleeping rough are incredibly vulnerable, and I know there are young children in these locations as well. The Lord Mayor and his LMP councillors are in charge of this city and they have a duty to serve every single person in Brisbane. The Lord Mayor is not seeking real solutions and is instead taking an inhumane and punitive approach to the most vulnerable people in this city. Labour councillors and this Labour opposition do not agree with his actions and we call on the Lord Mayor to show some compassion. Please restore access to power and barbecues for vulnerable people in Musgrave Park and Carrilpa Point Park.
Further speakers, councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you Madam Chair. I rise to speak briefly on a couple of events happened over the recess, which were related to Brisbane Festival and also LGA Conference, LGAQ Conference, which I was privileged enough to attend along with the Lord Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councillor Huang and councillor Kim, as has been mentioned previously. Couple of events happened with the Brisbane Festival that I want to make particular note of. One was the John Paul Cortier Fashion Show, which I and another colleague bought tickets to, and I have to say it was an extraordinary event, and I'm going to leave it at that, but I'm gonna, I'm looking, if it comes back again, I'll definitely go along and see it again. On a completely different note, Pacifica May was another event held by Brisbane Festival out at Wally Tate Park. That was also a great event and that had a lot of the local Logan community coming up for that one in particular, given the nationalities that were attending that event. And again, it was well attended and it was another great event held by Brisbane Festival. The LGAQ, well, there was over 100 motions and there was a fair whack of time appointed to those motions. I would suggest more than 90% of them were about asking the state or federal governments, both at that time the ALP governments, to stop cost shifting to council. And I would suspect that the reason that the motions, we got through them so very, very quickly was because everybody agreed with that particular sentiment. In fact, there was an actual segment called Stop the Cost Shift to Communities that was hosted by, that was hosted, started by councillor, sorry, Alison Smith, who has a particular opposition to that happening, as well as, there was councillor Theresa Harding, the Mayor of Ipswich, and councillor Dick from the Marano Regional Council. So it was, it was a, a particularly heavy on motions about them stopping them doing that. The other thing was, we did have a conversation, sorry, a speech by Anne Leahy, who's our, at that time was the shadow local government MP. I don't know who's going to be our local one, the actual minister. If it's Anne, well, congratulations to her because she's done an awesome job. She's travelled the state far and wide and I would suggest everybody knows Anne Leahy for the fabulous job she's done in assisting us. I was going to say, I actually don't know who the ALP minister is or was for local government and I, I still don't, who was it?
Megan Scanlon.
Oh, Megan Scanlon, right, okay, thank you councillor Perry. I actually didn't know, I've never seen her at any particular event and I've been to quite a few local government events. So congratulations to Anne, if she manages to pick up that portfolio, it'll be well-deserved. The other thing that was talked about, and there was actually a panel on this, was about the number of changes that have been made to the city plans over the years, one of the most changed piece of infrastructure or legislation that councils do more than 18 times. And there was one particular lady who got up, who was speaking on the panel, and she was talking about the cost of living and housing and her, her suggestion was that all councils should reduce infrastructure charges, which I was a bit outraged at, so I had to get up and say something. And I said, well, look, Brisbane City Council has reduced infrastructure charges on retirement villages, nursing homes and many other developments to try and encourage them, and all we do is get slammed as being in the pocket of developers. So I said, you know, we, we do what we can, but in, in the end, others have to do the heavy lifting as well as far as housing goes. And so I just want to thank again for being allowed the opportunity to attend the LGAQ conference, and it was a pleasure to have it here in Brisbane. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Hi, yes, I rise to speak briefly on Brisbane City Council's Bus Network Review debacle. Yesterday afternoon, Brisbane City Council issued public information to people on its database about the bus network review. This went out to everybody in Brisbane and on the council website. It was only after that time that City Projects then sent an email to councillors with details. So my first observation is this council has been enormously disrespectful to councillors who have been involved in this issue in some great detail. To go out publicly without briefing us in advance of major bus changes just demonstrates how political and how incompetent this LMP administration are and how appalling the City Projects team approach to this is when they know that all councillors should have been briefed in advance. The outcome of council going publicly without briefing us is that residents come to us without question, with questions. And I'm happy to give residents my advice on how incompetent and useless this council actually is. It is appalling that we have to figure all this information out rather than getting a briefing in advance from Brisbane City Council. Now, there are a few things I'm going to note. The media reports have been inaccurate about the extent of the cuts. We are losing the 108 bus in my ward. We are getting a new bus service to replace the 105 Yorongal Loop that was cut called the 127. It's interesting that I did know about this some time ago from council file requests, but I was told I wasn't allowed to mention it. So, you know, the fact that council's been keeping this information secret for months and months and months. Now, I don't know what the agreement between the outgoing state labour government and the LMP Brisbane City Council has been about when this information could be released, but presumably there was a secret agreement between the LMP and the ALP and now that information has been released. The state government has not approved the plan, that's been made clear. The plan is still a draft, the plan is still unfunded, the plan has no starting date. The plan is approved by Translink but isn't a draft and isn't something residents can comment on. So we're now left in this LMP zombie land where people think this will be what the buses are going to be, but we don't know now what the LMP council and state government are going to discuss. We don't know how much money is going to go into all of this. I note that Brisbane City Council says it's currently negotiating with the state government. Well, they're in caretaker mode, so that's not happening, and if it is, then that would be, you know, probably a breach of a lot of caretaker rules. So I just want to put on the record that as per usual, this LMP administration have failed, have failed to do the right thing by councillors and their communities, that they have gone out there, and I'm interested in how much the party at the bus depot costs, and they have gone out there and spent a lot of money, do you know what it is? The one bus route where the metro has started is one bus route. It's the issue that I raised right from the beginning about the problem with the metro, that there is no bus connection on the south side via M1 or M2 to the University of Queensland. Now, apparently the double-bendy bus is going to run on the 169 bus line. Great, fantastic, that's great, but how much money got spent on a party because one bus line got some metro buses on it? on a party because one bus line got some metro buses on it? Do the right thing here. Be upfront with residents about what is going on. The way you've done this, the lack of transparency, the secrecy, the fear and concern. There are a lot of new councillors here, but having lived through one big bus network change, I can tell you now that residents will mark you down. And, and every time you promise the metro, I sit back and have a giggle because it does not benefit anybody. And all those councillors out there, councillor Hutton over there, who's out there spruiking it in her community, not a razzu for her in that. So I just think you've done this extremely badly and you've led our community down.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Murphy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Just very, very briefly, councillor Johnson, to respond to councillor Johnson in general business, what a pack of lies we just heard there. You know, just really quickly, because she's not worth spending a lot of time on...
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Madam Chairman, you have made it very clear that that word is not appropriate in this chamber. I have been expelled for saying it, as have other councillors. I presume you will apply the same rule to councillor Murphy and expel him from the chamber.
Councillor Murphy, would you like to rephrase those comments, please?
Sure. She said things that weren't true, Madam Chair. I'll withdraw it. So she said the plan isn't approved.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Just to be clear, is it now your intention to give people the opportunity to withdraw the word lies rather than to expel them if they say it?
I don't uphold your point of order councillor Johnston.
No, I'm asking for clarification on a procedural issue, Madam Chairman.
No, councillor Johnston, I don't uphold your point of order.
So there's one rule for the LNP and one rule for everybody else. Thank you for clarifying.
Councillor Murphy.
Madam Chairman, I think it's important to correct the record because I think councillor Johnson was attempting to deliberately deceive the community in the statements she just made in the council chamber. So she said the plan wasn't approved. False. It has been approved by Translink. This is the network to be implemented. She said the plan was a draft. No, it's not. This is the final. The draft went out two years ago, Madam Chair. She said the state was in caretaker mode. It's not. We have a premier. He's the LNP premier, David Christopher Lee. We're not in caretaker mode. So, you know, this is the culmination of two years of work from officers of Brisbane City Council and Translink. It is, we've had over 5,000 submissions on the process, 20 major changes made from the draft plan to this plan. This, this has been done openly, transparently, and we've won awards for this process. So the only person who has behaved incredibly dishonestly throughout the process has been councillor Johnson, who has repeatedly attempted to mislead her community, that there were cuts coming, that there were services that were being cancelled, that they would be stranded, wouldn't be able to move around their community. That, she is the only one. And, and the only one out of actually all councillors in this chamber who's behaved appallingly during the consultation process for Brisbane's new bus network, not Greens councillors, not Labor councillors, not LNP councillors, no one has behaved as shamelessly as she has.
Further speakers? No further speakers. Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item 10 on the agenda. Councillor Strunk, would you please move the motion?
Thank you Chair. That this council provides a construction date to install a traffic signal upgrade for the intersection of Pine Road, Archerfield and Azalia Street.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Strunk and seconded by councillor Cassidy that this council provides a construction date to install traffic signals for the upgrade of the intersection of Pine Road, Archerfield Road and Azalia Street, Richlands. Is there any debate?
Thank you Chair. I move this, this motion, this notified motion, a local one, which the Lord Mayor has asked us to do, a majority of our notified motions to be local. So I'm trying to comply. And this, this particular motion is, is one that our, my community has been asking for, for a number of years. And all we've been getting is, is design and planning money, right? Now, in the last budget, the Lord Mayor was good enough to put a reasonable amount of money in there for, for the plan and the design, over $800,000. But I've been trying to find out as to when this, the construction date will actually start on this upgrade. And my community has had design money before. There's been three other pocket pools of money over the, since 2017, and no construction date as of yet. So it's a simple motion. When is the construction date? Now, I don't expect a, unless you have it, of course, I don't expect an exact day and month, but a year would be good, or the next budget, or whatever. And so the Lord Mayor is not in the chamber, of course, so maybe the infrastructure, infrastructure chair has a, an idea of what they're planning. But I would just be very appreciative if, if this, if this information would be forthcoming. Now, we know that this intersection is one of the most dangerous in Brisbane, probably the most dangerous at this particular point in time. And it has been growing worse and worse since Lyman councillor and the former councillor Milton Dick. And it's been identified as a black spot many, many years ago. And it's just considerably just getting worse and worse. There is accidents every week. That used to be, going back a few years, it used to be every couple of weeks, but it's now virtually every week. And the last major one was the person had to, of course, be taken to hospital. And luckily, they survived. But I don't want to see a death at this intersection when we know that it is one of the worst, if not the worst, in Brisbane at this particular point in time. And if we can just tell the community when it's going to be upgraded would be terrific. Thank you Chair.
Further speakers? If there's no further speakers, we'll now move the motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, that now concludes the meeting.